In order, can everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who would like to make comments during public discussion?
I guess I would. I was thinking back in two year period. It really kind of caught me walking in the courthouse today. And my son's going to go on the deployment and with the Air Force. Anytime you're on deployment, it's only ten years. But I was thinking it might actually be safer going there than we're going to be if we have to live with this pipeline. And I can talk about myself and other people can represent themselves too. What do you think of a hundred million south Algonah and just being trapped? I keep saying that, but I guess my question is, are we, are we listening to that? And I just want to, actually, I want to thank you guys. We've had our moments. But we're all, we're all citizens, but you came up with something. And you've been transparent and you've laid out why we're going through this distance, why we're going to go so far to Algonah. And why we're going to protect those kids and protect our families. And for that, I just want to say thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
I'm just going to say something quick. We've already went over so much of this stuff. Just as a kind of reminder of why we're doing this. When I came into town the other day on the Cor Lane there, I get behind his car and the guy has a license plate that says, U.S. Army veteran. So I thought, well, I'm going to follow him and tell him that he can get a regular Cassuth County plate that has a flag on it as a veteran. So I, he pulls over on Main Street and I pulled over and got out and started talking to him. And I said, you know, well, he said, I know, he said, I got one of them for my pickup. Turns out this guy is a retired military. They were living in Washington State. And he said, we just had to get out of there. The politics and the government's so crazy. We said, we looked on the internet and he said, we're going to move to a red state. Well, we decided we find Iowa and we looked at, we looked at several places. They ended up buying a little acreage south of Lone Rock. And, you know, then not just too many days ago, we had a customer in our shop there. And this couple, they live across from a call park now. For similar reasons, they were in Colorado and they moved here. So I think that's just kind of a reminder of why we're doing this is to protect this as a place, as a destination place for people that are coming here from out of state. We let this twenty-four mile thing go in across Cassuth County for a half mile on each side. That's twenty-four square miles. That's going to be a real estate debt zone. My wife and I are both realtors. We wouldn't dare sell anybody any property close to that without disclosing that you're going to be close to a hazardous pipeline buried under your ground. Well, how many people are going to want to invest in building something or buying a property like that? So again, like Mr. Deal said, I'd like to thank you guys for what you have did. I realize you're really fighting an uphill battle and we appreciate what you did for the people in town.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment or anything on the pipeline? This would be the time.
On the ordinance, Tammy's going to read here in a little bit. What's the footage today? Who's different than last time?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six hundred, same as it was last week.
So my, my question to, to you, one, two, three, four, five, six, six people, I'd count for sure. Is, is Cassuth County ready for a hazardous pipeline? Is the Algonah Fire Department hazmat certified? Do you guys know? Are they a hazmat team? The answer is no. The nearest hazmat team is an hour away. You know, so I don't know if it's in the plans, if, if you're going to, to continue to allow Summit to come in. If we're going to spend the money and the training and everything to, to get our EMS system up to snuff to deal with the hazmat episode. It would be expensive and, and very time consuming for the volunteers of, of our, of our EMS system. So, I mean, that's more to think about. I mean, the, 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 the financial commitment to do that would be quite, quite a bit. Year after year and training and equipment and I don't think there's that much value to a pipeline tax wise or anyways that, that would offset that.
Anything else for public discussion?
When he's talking about the taxes, it popped in my head. I thought the wind towers for how many years? And we're supposed to get all this money. Have we gotten a dime from the tax on the, we have gotten some money?
But the state rolled it all back.
So what's going to happen with pipeline is if people roll that back to the, to Governor Ronson, so we never do get a dime?
So they have the ability to do it.
County's going to get enough. But I'd just like to throw that out. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I can't see.
Yeah, come on up.
No, I can't see you.
If you could come up, if you could come up by the pole, then we all could see you. If you'd come up by the table, it'd be better for.
More than entering.
I think this is a great idea, putting an ordinance together. Okay, and the context is like, you know, the windmills. You really don't have any power. This, this Stephanie Rose from the Eighth District Federal Court has already ruled kind of leaning to help Summit do whatever they want. I mean, we got to put it works, but the only way I can think that we can do something about this is get all the counties that have ordinances and go to federal court. Do we have the money to go to federal court? Because that's what it's going to take. There's no way anybody in their right mind can allow five hundred miles of poison under pressure. You know, it's like a lot of times, it's going to kill us. Sure. What about the water that goes into carbonic acid? It's going to break. There's no getting around. It is going to break. I don't care what they tell you. It's going to break. And carbonic acid is going to be more of a problem than, than these plumes. And another thing down where I live is we get some strong winds. You get a break by Irvington, it's going to kill you sitting here in Algonah if that leak isn't stopped. I mean, it's like you're sitting in a supervisor's meeting and you've got to put all the ducks in here because you have to air it. You're going to be dead. People just don't want to face up to the fact. We have to get off of our hands and do whatever we can to stop this. And I don't know if we have the power to do that. I may have just let out a bunch of hot air. You know, that might be all I've just done. This got me stopped.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
I'd like to say one thing that I just found out recently. Through the carbon capture process, they use amine's in their scrubbers. And when these scrubbers are rinsed with steam and water, there's carcinogens that have been found in that. That it could be in there, released into the air and also into their discharge water. And like I said, I just was aware of that and I don't know if that's been talked about.
Could you state your name, please? I do catch that.
Paul Hamilton.
Okay.
Thanks. Anyone else? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
I'm going to make a motion to remove discussion, amendment to cell phone policy and discussion, approve supervisor request for cell phones. We just had on last week, so it's voted on, it's been done. This is a self-serving thing that's put on here again. There's no reason to vote it. It's voted, it passed, it is done, done last week. How many times you want to put it on? Put it on every week?
I didn't put this on.
Well, it was read, you understood that you were voting on, you voted on it, you passed it. Now, now you're saying, oh, golly, I didn't understand what I voted on. I want to change it. Come on, that's childish. It was read aloud in this boardroom, people. If people, if the, if the stakeholders can't trust you to pass something as simple as that, how can they trust you with, with a twenty-two million dollar budget and know what you're doing?
I put it on the agenda after having a discussion with our attorney. The vote denied. So, you know, it was misunderstood based on the language and I want to revisit it and look at it again.
Josh, it was read aloud in this boardroom last week.
Jack.
I'll second Jack's motion, so you can have legal discussion.
Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Class?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacktor?
No.
What, naff?
No.
Sticker?
No, motion fails. Would entertain another motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Have motion on floors or second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Class?
No.
Jerks?
No.
Whacktor?
Yes.
Naff?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes. Motion carries three to two. Monthly update from Secondary Road Foreman. Lucky we're not getting snow yet.
Got the wings all on and everything ready to go.
Wings on, but it's nice to keep it in the shed.
Not going to get any snow until next year.
It's the way it's looking.
Nothing to do until then, right? Did you get out to sink yet or?
Talk to who?
Out to, or not, or yeah.
Bergens?
Bergens, I meant, yeah.
Yes. They got all a little bit of dirt out there, but it's all prepared.
Sounds good. Was it just a crack on, on top there? Yeah.
Anything further for us or? Board have anything for the foreman? Lawrence, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
KRHC on the report, you're up next.
So for the first four months of the fiscal year, we've been seeing a positive margin, which has been, been good. Our inpatient floor has been less bit busy so far this year in comparison to the last, but definitely expect that to go up as we head into the winter months. Not really seeing a whole lot of, a whole lot of flu. Have been seeing a, a bit of COVID so far in, in the last month or, or two. Our outpatient, our outpatient services definitely staying busy including our X-rays and MRIs and those types of things. Really having a lot of jobs open right, right, right now. Over the last few years, we've been really lucky to have not been seeing a nurse short, short, short shortage, but we definitely are kind, kind, kind of at that point now. I want to say that we have five nur- nursing jobs open right, right, right now, which I would say is the most that we had. Definitely within the last five years, so really just working on trying to get stew, stewards in and get them to come and see what, what it's like here so that we can bring them on full, full of time when they are done. Kind, kind of the same with X-ray techs. We have two jobs now. And really there's not many people looking for jobs in that realm, so probably go, going to have to wait till the next class graduates next May. It's so just really as a facility, trying to provide education to these schools. Just because these are great jobs, definitely well-paying, well-paying, paying, paying jobs and just ma- making sure that high, that high school kids know that they are there. Our durable medical equipment store did have our state inspection within the last month. So now the last piece is that Medicare will need to come in, hopefully within the next month. And then, and, and then we can build insurance from there, so. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
We've got two different slides in here. Operating margin here is a desired tier. And you have actual tier below that.
What's that?
Desired tier, and then you have actual tier below that. Foreman is one percent and the Mercy goal is three percent. Is it three percent on every hospital in the system?
In our Mercy network, yes. Yep, it's three per, per, per percent. Are you looking at operating cash flow margin or operating? Yes, that's a new metric that they are looking at now. And I think our budget was around, was definitely the, the, the low that, but the, but the Mercy target is the same for everyone. Yep.
So you're at what, two, three, but at the end of the year, do you plan on being at three?
I think so far, I, yeah, I mean, our inpatient is definitely significantly less than what it's been in previous years, which is good to an extent. You really don't want our inpatient floor full all, all of the time because it, it, because it's not good for staffing. And really as a, as a hospital, you want to keep people from getting to that six state. But our outpatient services just really come to, I mean, we've done more C, CT scans in this first four months of the year than, than, than we have ever in previous years. So I definitely see that growth hel- helping us get there, yeah.
Your debt service coverage is adequate, so you must be making some money.
Yep, just some, yep. That's the goal.
I just have a question for you. Are you going to be advertising medical?
Equipment store?
Yeah, so people know.
Yeah.
Kind of bury it back in there.
It is, yeah. It definitely wouldn't have been our first choice of where to put that just because of where it's at. I think some, someday when we do a renovate, they, rent, renovate, they, the goal would be to access it from the outside. But we haven't done a lot of advertising yet because we can't build insurance yet. So once we can do that in the next month, you'll definitely do that and, and have some sort of road, roadside, somebody to as well to, to people. Yep.
Sounds good. Any other questions, thoughts from the board? Right, thank you for your report.
Have a Merry Christmas.
You too.
Merry Christmas. Next up is approving discussion decision, approved third and final reading of the proposed amendment of amendment to the Cassuth County zoning ordinance that addresses the regulation and restriction of the use of land for the transportation or transport of hazardous liquid pipeline through hazardous liquid, through hazardous liquid pipeline. Is there any motions for that or discussion?
So I'm moved up here.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Once again, they, the pipeline refuses to release their plume study to the public. I understand they want to, they want to release it to a couple supervisors. That doesn't, just tells you one thing, when they're not willing to release their plume study to the public, it's not in favor. It's not in good. If it wasn't in favor, they could go and release it. And so I think it's, I think it's just sad that they won't come out publicly and give that to the public.
Hi Doug, we're on the pipeline, ready for you to come up whenever. Thanks, bye.
We'll wait a little bit for Doug to get up here too.
How can they release it to two or a couple supervisors and not to the whole board and not to the public? That doesn't make any sense.
So that, that was an offer that was made available to the whole board. That was not limited.
We can't meet with more than two at a time if, without it being a public meeting.
So if they're going to release it to you?
And fire chiefs and.
Then you get to release it to the public? Or you're going to sign a, a non-disclosure that you can't tell the people who voted you in?
I have that same question.
I, I was, I was told we would not have to sign a non-disclosure agreement. I don't know if you guys want to speak to anything.
Why wouldn't they just stand up right there? They're right there, same two every week. Stand up, tell us what, whom study is?
You know why they don't want to tell us.
Because it's three thousand plus feet.
Three or more.
Navigator's was three thousand on eight inch.
What was that?
You would not have signed it any year.
Okay.
We're all here, we're all here.
It's, it's in the email. You're responding to it.
For Wednesday.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
You guys don't want to answer any questions? You have a lot to hide.
Okay.
I think it's, we don't want a three thousand feet from the county. Let Humboldt County deal with it.
Nobody should answer.
Are we waiting for somebody?
I thought we should wait for Doug. Yeah, yeah. I didn't see you. Go ahead, Galen.
Navigator. When I heard, you know, everybody, being those supervisors, they come to me where I was and they tell me that Navigator's dead. And in my eyes, Navigator's not dead, correct? Because some people will give ten cents on the dollar. And they run a T up there, hook it over and send it to Dakota, right? Carter's shaking his head.
So, so my uncle down in Hamilton County actually, Navigator was going through his property. He farms down by Jewel and the easement, unlike Summit's easement, when you, when Navigator canceled their project, that is closed and done, they cannot come back and run a pipe through his ground. Whereas Summit's is more open-ended, so, and Navigator cannot sell that parcel to Summit without my uncle signing off on restarting that whole process of signing an easement then with Summit or any other company. So, so that was, that, I, I just talked to him over the weekend and that's what he was, he was telling me on that. So when they say they're, they're done, they would have to restart that process in order to have that, their pipeline go through again.
So if they wanted to regain some of the money back, they could restart it and then sell it to? Sell to Summit.
If the landowner would sign off on it.
But if they already got paid, why wouldn't they?
But there was a termination in their easement that if they abandoned the project, it's, it's done. No, it wasn't near as much money. Yeah. I mean, he got a little bit, but not much.
That's how he'll get his other half.
His what?
That's how he'll get the rest of his money, by allowing them to sell to Summit.
No, the easement is done. The easement is done. It's back to his property. Navigator no longer owns an easement on his ground now that they've terminated their project. So that's unlike Summit. That, the easements are worded differently, so.
So basically if I would have sold or whoever would have sold to Summit and they say they're done, in five years, somebody else comes in, I can still get a pipe on through the ground.
That's how I understand it.
Even though they terminate theirs.
That's how I understand it, but I, I, I guess you'd have to ask them about that.
Another question I got. Why did you go to them to discuss chair to co-chair?
Sorry.
For, to, for what?
Give you guys information on stuff?
It came to the whole board.
The whole board?
Yeah.
That was our emergency management coordinator was actually contacted first. So fire chiefs or supervisors and EMA were all invited and allowed to have access to this.
And it wasn't closed session, so you can reveal everything they said?
Yep.
So Doug, just to bring you up to speed, before you were up here, we had a motion in second to approve the third reading. And then we were having discussion here, so. Roger, Roger made the motion and Carter seconded it.
And it is to approve the third and final reading?
Correct.
Call a question?
Is there any further discussion?
I have a other question, please.
Sure.
Last week, kind of, all of a sudden, you guys didn't know if it was a six fifty, eighteen fifty, a twenty-six, a twenty-six forty, three thousand. And then you guys made the motion and said twenty-six hundred. And Doug had the paperwork for twenty-six hundred. So you guys figured it out before you came in the meeting that was twenty-six hundred, which is an illegal meeting. And you can't make a decision in closed session. You have to come out of closed session to make a decision. So how was it? So shouldn't it be back to the twenty-six forty?
There was no decision made in closed session.
Then Doug had papers for six fifty, eighteen fifty, twenty-six, twenty-six forty, three thousand? Because how did he pop the paper to you and have the twenty-six hundred that you guys voted on five minutes before that?
Galen.
I'm just asking a simple question. Because when I'm outside, there's a lot of people asking me and I'm like, I don't know.
You, you should be aware of how closed session works and we had conversations with our attorney. We asked him to prepare a document that came before us. The decision was made in open session. There was no decision made, made in closed session, as we said at that time. And if, if anyone was not in agreement with it for the discussion, that could have been discussed and voted at any time during the meeting. That all happened in open session. Besides our conversation with our attorney, so.
So you knew coming in it was twenty-six hundred? Cause what if you guys would have voted on three thousand? Would he have then run downstairs and given a picture or a little quick or he had one ready?
I have no idea.
What?
I, I don't know.
Look, so the only reason I'm asking is when I went outside after last week's meeting, I don't know if people drilled me asking you that question. So I'm asking this so you can answer for these people.
The important thing is knowing why we did that.
I understand your twenty-six hundred because of the engineer. Which when I was in there, I pushed for twenty-six forty, which is a half mile, so you hit forty feet away, which that's still pretty close. Alright, thank you.
Uh, roll call vote please.
Plaque.
No.
Jerks.
Yes.
Whacktor.
Yes.
Naft.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes. Motion carries four to one.
Okay, this is the document that will be, uh, published in the newspaper. So if Tammy and Kyle can sign that please. Does the board desire to have this published next week in the official newspapers?
Might as well.
Okay. And then on the twenty-sixth, uh, there'll be, there'll be a resolution making everything, uh, adopted and official, so. You can go ahead and keep that one Tammy.
Thanks Doug.
Pardon me?
Thanks.
So, the feed is twenty-six forty?
Twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred, so it changed yet again?
No.
It was twenty-six forty last?
No, no.
Okay Doug, next up is, uh, rising I O D O T fiscal year, secondary road construction programs.
Oh yeah, uh, with rising construction costs, um, the ability to, uh, construct as much road resurfacing as we had programmed is just not able. Our farm-to-market fund balance is, is too low.
Okay, guys, if you're going, hey, if you're going to have conversations, please go out in the hallway or somewhere else. We have business to conduct here.
Thank you all for coming in.
Can I ask one question, not gonna interrupt you Doug, so this won't be official until you approve it on the twenty-sixth? Is that correct? Am I understanding that right?
Well, I'm not an attorney. But the document, section eight of, of this amendment, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval and publication is provided by law. So, I don't know if it's publication or the fact the board will come through, have a resolution, say that it's formally adopted, that the first, second, third reading passed and it was published in the newspapers on December twenty twenty-one and then we will take it, what that does is we'll take it to the recorder's office and it'll be recorded. So whether it's actually the week of December eighteen, because it would be published on December twenty twenty-one, or whether it is when it's recorded on December twenty-sixth, I, you know, I'm not sure, but it's.
If the board does not approve that resolution on the twenty-sixth, though, then it would not be.
I don't know how they could not approve it, because that resolution will be, whereas the, it's more or less saying the board has gone through its legal process to do everything and now be, be official that the, this ordinance is adopted. And then like I say, it ends up being recorded and if any, it'll be on public record if anyone looks forward to finding, wants to fight it at the recorder's office. So, it, it's gonna, it's gonna say, the board of supervisors did this on, had the first reading, had a public hearing November twenty-one, second reading, uh, November, or December five, third reading, December twelfth. Um, all legal matters have been taken care of now, therefore being resolved and this ordinance be official and be adopted. So I don't, I don't know how you could vote against it.
Okay.
And, so.
Sorry to interrupt, thanks.
No problem.
Thanks guys, you doing?
Thank you.
Sorry about that Doug, feel free to continue.
Alright, uh, yes, our, the funds that we have were not enough to do all the resurfacing that we had in our accomplishment year. In your, um, meeting folder, you have a document that has the accomplishment year that we had on July one of twenty twenty-three. There is another map that's dated December seven, twenty twenty-three. And we have reduced the amount of resurfacing, um, that we are actually able to complete. So, we need to modify our construction program to make it reflect what is going to be happening in the accomplishment year. Most importantly, if you look at the project by Leg Yard, we had planned to use farm-to-market funds to resurface that and we had to make a decision to not do a project. We chose not to do the project that is north of Leg Yard and do the one right east of Leg Yard. So we will be spending local money to resurface that project. So this resolution that I'd like the board to act on, um, goes through and it, it amends the project description, reduces the amount for the job on A sixteen. It changes funding on the job east of Leg Yard and it eliminates the twenty-one project. Thank you.
Good morning Todd. Any motions that affect or?
Yeah, um, I would entertain the motion. So, resolution twelve, twelve, twenty-three, oh one.
So.
Yeah, motion on the floor, sir, second.
Seconded.
Any discussion on the resolution?
Did you push that back down another year and your?
We will be putting that into our program and looking to see when, what we can do against.
Okay.
We're working on that program right now.
This second thing can do with the fact that she was short on it?
With, no, not the, um, local effort, no.
Just construction costs have gone up so much for asphalt and stuff?
That's part of it on everything.
Right.
Um, we had a pretty aggressive look there in our farm-to-market, we spent a lot of farm-to-market in the last few years, so our balance was not as high, so we'd hope for.
Uh, roll call vote please.
Plaque. Jerks.
Yes.
Whacktor.
Yes.
Naft.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes. Motion carried and unanimous.
Side notes and I just need two copies, you can keep one of those motions out or resolutions, I'll get it to you too, but you can keep one of these also. Tammy.
Thank you. Alright, thanks. Next is construction and right of way?
Uh, yes, we have a request from Interstate Power and Light, uh, there is a a drain storage area that is being removed, that has electricity running to it. And Iowa Electric wants to remove the, uh, the lines that run to that drain facility, so they will be doing just a little bit of work in the road right of way of two hundred thirty street. And, uh, they'll be putting in, uh, taking those off and putting in anchor, the anchors will end up being in the field. But I would recommend that the board would go ahead and approve of this request.
So moved, anyway, a motion, is there a second to that motion please?
I moved it.
I'll second.
Okay, Josh. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote please.
Plaque. Jerks. Whacktor.
Yes.
Naft.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes. Motion carried unanimous. Anything else for construction?
Uh, yeah, I have some plans for our resurfacing that need to be signed. And also we have, uh, next week, Ron Inglbarts is retiring, so we have it on the agenda. To, uh, recognize his work, we give out a plaque and Kyle, if you could sign that please? Um, and then sign these plans, there's three title sheets here for the resurfacing work and send that down to the board.
Ron Ledyard or Lakota?
Lakota.
Yeah, right here.
I'll take those sheets here, thank you.
Yeah, the whole board.
Did you just need Kyle or did you need the whole board?
The whole.
Yeah, we need, we need the whole board on that, uh, in plans. Thank you. Conservation Commission, they're in the process of gaining some property up in section ten and sections fifteen in Portland Township. One of the parcels would need a plat of survey and Kendall was in and asked if our office would do that for them. Does the board have any reservations about that at all? Spending some time surveying and coming up with a plaque for the conservation. Alright. Uh, we have continued to stake road right of way and, uh, getting some, uh, letters out for removal about obstructions or making some phone calls to get some obstructions removed. Right now, we're not making many official, uh, letters, um, but we're trying to get things cleaned up a little bit. Uh, construction down by, uh, George Gunter's, uh, contractor drove some pure piling. They were low, they were, the spacing between the piling was short, creating a situation where the caps are going to be cantilevered over. Um, it's going to take some extra design, the contractor has been ordered to get a design to, uh, make everything work there. We're waiting, uh, an engineer's, uh, solution there, but things have kind of stalled there. Uh, we received a resignation from one of the employees in Lakota already, so we're looking for another person there. We're ready to continue to crush gravel. And that's about everything that I have. I will be gone leaving this afternoon or shortly before lunch. I have a meeting in Des Moines at three today and then tomorrow our engineers, annual engineers conference. And, uh, some guys will be in the office a little bit, I think Thursday and Friday, everyone will be out.
Is that just engineers in Iowa or?
The Iowa County Engineers Conference.
In Des Moines.
In Des Moines.
Gotcha.
Thanks Doug.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Enjoy the trip? Next, we have transfers made by the auditor, um. Does anyone have any questions for the transfers or? Just otherwise, let the record reflect the knowledge of transfers made by the auditor. Next is amendment to cellphone policy. Believe we've gotten emails with Todd's opinion yesterday.
I think I did too guys.
I got it.
Again, we're not employees, so I don't know why we should be putting cellphones out when we're not employees.
Well, I think based on, uh, Todd's comments on the, uh, cellphone policy, um, I think we should go back and remove that wording that was added. Um, so I'll make that a motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
And remove all wording that was added, so return it to the original.
Return it to the original, correct.
I'll second that motion. Is there any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Plaque.
No.
Jerks.
Yes.
Whacktor.
Yes.
Naft.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes. Next is to approve the request for a cellphone.
I move to deny. I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor, any discussion? We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
We're not employees, so it doesn't, it doesn't fit us.
Roll call vote please.
Plaque.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes.
Wacter.
No.
Knapp.
No.
Stecker, sorry.
No. Motion failed. Are there any other motions?
Motion to approve the request.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Plaque.
No.
Jerks.
No.
Wacter.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes. Motion carried three to two.
So maybe we should put this on agenda next week again to change it back the other way. It seems like those three can get their way, but put it on next week agenda again to pass this on.
Jack, the reason why I had it re-add, it was based on conversation that I had with Todd. When we rendered a vote last week, uh, three yes, two no, it was brought up that, um, based on the wording in the policy, that it required, the entire board to vote yes, but that was not the intention. The wording was full approval, which, um, as you guys should know, since being here, the full approval of the board, um, rules as majority. It's when three to two vote yes, that is majority, that is a board decision. That was.
Full means five, five board members.
That would be unanimous.
Majority means a majority.
Well, Jack, let me jump in here because you demanded that I come here today to explain to you and the public why that's the way it should be. Name one decision that you make that's unanimous. One decision that this board makes that's unanimous has to be unanimous decision.
Get rid of the county engineer.
That's the only one, and that was a contract one. That's not by law.
And that's been changed.
Well, that's fine, but I mean, there isn't a decision that this board makes that's unanimous. As a matter of fact, I'm going to quote you something which all of you have a copy of or should. It's the, uh, basically the, uh, document that you receive, I think, from ISAC as far as your supervisor responsibilities. And it says, based on this, the following actions of the board require the affirmative vote of a majority of its membership. That means three out of the five, okay? And that's prior code three thirty-one point two one two sub two. Leaving a tax, entering into a contract for the erection of a public building, making a settlement with a county officer, buying or selling real estate, designating a new site for a county building, changing the boundaries of a township, appropriating money to aid in the construction of a highway or a bridge, appointing or removing an officer from office. Then it goes on to say that in all other cases, a majority of the members present, so that could be two out of three, right? Need a three to have a quorum. If there is a quorum, make transact business legally in the name of the board supervisor. So when you put language in there, which I didn't see, I wasn't a part of, when you put language in there, the full approval of the board, my opinion is that a full approval is a majority. If you would have put in there approval by the full board, now you see there's a little difference there, right? So that's why I said that it appears that the action was taken three to two, therefore the, the approval passed. Now, the, the problem that this, I mean, it brings up is that I assume you all know independently, you have no authority. Independently, you have no authority. You cannot engage in business for the county independently. You can receive things. You cannot go out and enter into a contract independently. It has to be brought to the board for decision. So had this probably been done differently, then there would have been this controversy. But, you know, if you all have iPads, right? And how is that determined?
Majority, that was the, the board all, all agreed to years ago.
But even if it was three to two, it still would have been, each member would have received it, right? And that's the transact business and naturally in the digital age that we're in, it's needed, right? Well, we have this policy, which that was presented to me, that is Kasoot County employees. I'm not an employee. I'm an employer. You guys aren't employees, you're employers. In my office, I make the decisions, right? Subject to not board approval, but subject to the budget that the board approved. No, because I'm an elected official. Department head is an employee. Doug's an employee too, okay? So if I decide that I want to have a cellphone, I don't have to get approval from anyone other than make sure it's in the budget. But out of, out of courtesy, I bring it to your attention and say, hey, I'd like a line item for a cellphone. Now, I don't, I use my personal cellphone and, you know, I just find that to be easier because two phones seems to be cumbersome to me. I don't think that a county cellphone should be used personally, period. Uh, one thing I did agree with on Josh's language is that maybe that policy should be revisited. Not today. As far as making sure they understand that should be turned in at the conclusion of the, their employment that, you know, I would think that the department head or the elected official who is in charge of that would make sure that that's in the contract with the employee if they get it. But, um, you know, I, I, I don't think that it was necessary to even address that policy. I think looking at it from the standpoint of the difference between county and personal, um, yeah, you guys do a lot of phone calls. And I, I don't see how that, how that could be in any way, um, um, wrong for, you know, any one of you that to want a cellphone to do your, your county business. The real, the, the, the reality is though, much the same as I've decided, that's cumbersome to have to. And, you know, so looking at it from the standpoint of, um, transacting county business, I think, you know, if, if it's phone calls for county business, then, you know, cellphone, if approved by majority, you do, it's fine. But, you know, I think the full, if I were to speculate, Josh, you wrote the language, so you can jump in here. I think it has to be disclosed to the full board, you know, and a decision made before you do it. That's my opinion, okay? But certainly we don't want to have employees and elected supervisors in the same policy because it's, it's just a, it makes it a mess. So that's why I said that, you know, looking at it from the standpoint of, of approval, that, you know, the only one that you have to do unanimously is one, uh, if you change it, I don't know, but if you said you change it, okay, it's changed. Is one that you contracted to do long before you guys even came in. So everything else is by just a majority, whether it be a majority of the board present or a majority of the entire board is dependent upon code. Now, I am going to address this because this is also in your little, well, I'd say a little, a hundred and thirteen pages. I can obviously print that out. But, um, looking at it from the standpoint of, uh, rules of parliamentary procedure, because that's brought up a bunch. The law in Iowa is that parliamentary rules are established to aid in the orderly conduct of business, but that they can be waived or ignored by the board of supervisors and measures passed contrary to established parliamentary rules are still valid and cannot be attacked on that basis. That was state of Iowa versus DeCosta back in two thousand. That's what's established that. But then the suggestion is rules should not be so rigid or inflexible in situations because the actual rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules of Order, may not apply in every one of your situations, so they gotta be flexible. Certain situations call for suspension or amending of the rules. Uh, so, you know, I, I think you have to focus on that as being an aide, but you guys still have to do business, all right? And then the last thing that I wanted to address is that we need to, we need to change some things, at least with me, um, in the sense of how this board is going to request advice or opinions from me. In the past, about fifteen, eighteen years ago, um, there were some issues that came up that it was a constant. This one did this, this one did that, he said this, he said that. Uh, and I was turning into a mediator. That's not my role in this, in this government. It's not to be a mediator. I'm not to settle disputes between five supervisors. You guys have to discuss things in open form unless it's a closed meeting approved by the law. And you have to settle, you have to get through those things. You have to talk about it. I don't, you know, Jack made it clear that he didn't agree with the cellphone. That's how you do it in a elected legislative process. You discuss it. You decide it. Majority rules, okay? But it's, it's, it's turning into Tuesdays in the late, late morning. I, I, and all of you have done it. You know, it brought to my attention, well, this happened and that happened. Um, and it's almost like, uh, you know, I'm turning into a mediator. By code three thirty-one point seven fifty-six provides that I, one of my duties is to give advice or written opinion to the board. Okay? That's, that's paraphrased. That's also to elected officials and department heads. Those opinions and advice usually come in writing. Uh, in the past, when that was created, it was, you know, handwritten or, you know, a, a formal letter. I can do it in, in email. I think that's a little bit more convenient, at least for me, to send it out to everyone. But those are going to require now from me, if an individual wants to bring something up, then they're going, I have a form, a form I created, like I said, fifteen to eighteen years ago. If you want me to give advice or an opinion to this board and it won't be individuals, uh, I will say, fill out a form and I will discuss it with the entire board, just so you know. It's not going to be behind the scenes. The only thing is that if it's a closed session issue, then I will make sure that it's a closed session issue when I present it to the board. But I have this form, all right? I'm going to try and put it in digital format because I should bring it into the twenty-first century. But you're going to put in writing what you want me to advise this board on or look into. That doesn't mean that you are going to be preempted or not allowed to come down in a situation where it seems to be kind of important immediately. But I'm not going to mediate. I'm not going to, you know, listen to, well, this is how this person did this. Uh, those situations will be, I'll advise you on those things to the entire board. Uh, but if you have a situation as the board, much the same as what you do occasionally on Tuesdays where there's something that happens in the board by someone here who's presenting something, you want to have discussions with me on, that's fine. But I don't, I, I, I just, I, I think that I'm being thrust in the middle of things that I should not be thrust in the middle of. This is something I should not have been thrust in the middle of. This is not my call. Um, you know, and, and so I don't want to do that anymore because no fault of any one of you. When I say something orally, it's like the, the telephone game, you know? You say something to Roger, Roger says something to Joshua, Joshua says something to Carter, and Carter says something to Kyle, but the time gets to Kyle, it's something different, right? So I don't want to do that. That exposes me. It potentially provides improper information to you, so my advice and opinions will be in this form here in front of the five of you or whoever's present, at least a quorum. Fair enough?
Yep.
So the last thing though that I wanted to bring up is that, um, you know, I guess we already talked about it, you know, down the road, if we want to revisit that for our employees as far as the cellphone, um, then, um, as far as being property of the county, then I think that's, that's probably a, maybe a good fix. We can bring it up at a department head meeting, see what everybody else thinks. I had, when I, before we had this policy in my office, um, I had a contract that I did with my employees that needed a cellphone, um, you know, that, that had that language in it, you know, that if they're ever terminated or leave the office, uh, that the cellphone is to be returned to me. You know, so I think that that's important. I oftentimes, when we've discussed this before, I was back on, you know, when we were talking, you know, the, the hours and, and pay and that stuff. You know, certain times when someone leaves, the last thing they're thinking about is dropping their keys off and, and, you know, their cellphone. Uh, so at least then we'll have something that potentially bind it. But, okay. Anything else?
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Next is the county delegate opening on N I R H A's board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I, I am Justin Statson, the director with North Iowa Regional Housing Authority, and this is our board chair, Bruce.
Bruce Helvinsen.
Yeah.
I'm from Lake Mills.
Nice to meet all of you this morning.
Nice to meet you too.
You too.
It won't be tough on you. Quite easy. What happened, I'll later read in here a little bit, then I'm going to turn it over to Justin. About approximately a year ago, our great board member that we had that was a delegate from Kasoot County that I hope all of you knew, Roger Batt, passed away. Roger was on our N I R A board, North Iowa Area Regional Housing Authority. It's a nine county board and Kasoot County is part of that through the twenty eighty agreement. You had an excellent, excellent person from Kasoot County representing you at our N I R A board for quite some time, many years. Dependable, you know, showed up, gave input, had a library of information until no board member had as much as Roger did. You couldn't have gotten any better. He passed away. Need to replace Roger. I think Justin has responded to you in a letter form or emails or whatever. We haven't filled his position yet. At least it's not our job to do that. It's our job to see that that is done by this board in front of us here today. We hope that you want to still be part of the twenty eighty agreement. If you don't, that's your call. I think you're all familiar with twenty eighty agreements. You don't have to be part of this organization if you don't choose to do so. In the event you do, we hope, and I know there's all kinds of people that have the qualities that Roger Batt has from Kasoot County. I've heard that there's all kinds of intelligent people from Kasoot County. I believe that. So if you decide to continue on, I would hope as a chairman of the board, they get somebody that just doesn't say yes to everything when they're on a board. You have somebody that has some input and says no, might not turn out the way they want it to. But we don't have an open checkbook, just like you don't either, you know? So I hope you decide to continue. I hope you can pick somebody as a delegate really soon to start coming to our monthly meetings in Mason City. I'm going to turn it over to Justin.
Hi, so we meet on, generally on the fourth Tuesday of the month at nine AM and, uh, we operate, um, a housing choice voucher program in our eight counties and, um, uh, lower income public housing. Uh, we have fourteen units here in Algonia that are operated on, um, in the seventeen and eighteen hundred block of Mound and Maple. in the seventeen and eighteen hundred block of Mound and Maple. We also, we operate four hundred vouchers within our region, and Cassuth County is one of the regions. So that voucher is something that a applicant can take to a private landlord, and we assist them with rent at that place so it can be used on the private market. So like you said, Roger passed away in February. We're just asking that, that the board here nominate someone. In general, all of our, all of our boards nominate someone from their community, someone from their county to represent them on our board. They can represent or choose an alternate to represent them too. But where, really, our 2080 agreement was created in nineteen seventy-eight, which brought N I R A as a conduit to administer federal funds for housing in these eight counties.
I only see two of the board members that if you go back to nineteen seventy-eight, that, you know, they probably had hair at the time. And the other three probably weren't hardly even old enough to be eligible to be a supervisor. Oh, I just throw something out there. You know, whatever. But, yeah, we're here, we need to fill that position. And if we don't, then we need to know that you're not going to do that, one of the two. It's been about a year. We've tried, but evidently success up to date. Our, we're pretty act, well, we're real active. Our budget is, what, we're in excess of, what, two million? Yes. Roughly two million dollar budget. How many units do we have for total for all of our?
So, yeah, we operate a hundred twenty-one rental units on ten properties in our spread amongst these eight counties.
In different towns throughout the eight counties.
In addition to the four hundred vouchers of assistance tenants can take anywhere that they choose from in our whole region.
It's all federally funded. Whether you like it or not, that's the way it is, and it's there, the program's there, and it's, yeah, we do the best we can.
Yep, so then we're just asking for you to nominate someone. Find that person, nominate them to join our board to be your voice on our board.
I guess my question would be, is there any particular line of work or experience or qualifications that you'd like to see in a new board member?
Well, if you get somebody like Roger, that he'd be conservative, but wasn't afraid to vote on spending some, occasionally some larger sums of money to do a project, just a well-rounded guy. Get somebody like him. Don't get somebody who just says yes all the time to everything, but, because you have a lot, a lot of good people in Cassuth County, just like we do in the other counties, to pick from. And they don't have to be a supervisor. They can be just a general public person, and that's who I would recommend that you pick. And choose somebody that, you know, is progressive, maybe been in business. Don't have to be, but that's our liking. It's going to be up to you, the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors, but we would like to have that filled pretty darn soon, within the next thirty days, I would think. We have a lot of things on our agenda that are coming up. There are going to be some bigger key issues through HUD and spending and whatever else. Maybe eliminate, sell some properties, whatever. But didn't even if we did, or you hear that? We're going to sell one of the properties in one of our counties if that was the case. Well, we're not getting rid of the property because that property is still eligible for the voucher program. The people living there can make application for a voucher at the office in Mason City remain there, and it gets subsidized. You know, the person that ended up buying that property is going to get paid through HUD. Simple. So I hope you pick somebody fairly soon. There's times that we struggle a little bit getting a form. So we're going to leave it up to our good partner that we've had since nineteen seventy-eight or whatever it was to continue on and pick somebody as good as you had in Roger Batt. Absolutely somebody I thought that did a really, really good job. Too bad he's gone. Any questions?
Do you guys have business cards or do you have any?
Justin's portion is.
You said you guys meet on the fourth Tuesday of the month, what time is that?
We meet the third, third, fourth Tuesday of the month, every month.
Yeah, what, what time?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
In Mason City.
Where's it held at?
At our office, we have an office right in Mason City. It's about two blocks straight east of the downtown mall area.
Police Department.
Right by the police department, if you know where that is. Really easy to get to.
Well, thank you guys for coming over.
Well, thank you for listening.
See what we can find.
Getting on the agenda, and once again, really nice meeting all of you.
You too.
You too?
Thank you.
Yep?
Sorry, didn't have enough for everybody.
Plug it in and pass it down.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Next, we can start into budget allocation requests here. Does anyone need a break or are we good to keep going? Nyahcog Housing Trust Fund, you are up first here.
That would be me.
Good morning, girl.
First, wow. Write that down, I hope you don't mind if I just come up and stand. I, I get to work with Nyahcog, I've worked there. How old is my daughter? Sixteen years now, I've been a city planner for thirty-three. And anyway, I also get to work with great counties like Cassuth County, who are the real point of activity, right? Getting out into the community. And Roger here serves on our board to make sure that we're doing everything right. What do you think, Roger, are we doing okay?
Well.
Yeah, depends on the day, probably, but anyway. So I'll try to be real brief. I am a city planner, so that's hard for me, but, no, I will be brief. So I brought you a little handout to something to have some pictures. I don't know about you, but a look before and after, to see, to see the impact of what's going on. So our program was started in twenty-eleven. We get these calls from elderly widows, even when I worked for the city, who would say, my furnace isn't working, I don't know what to do. I don't have the money, my husband died and took his pension with him. And so this program really was born out of the need to help people like that. Since then, it's really expanded. At that time, we had like a hundred and fifty thousand, I think, for the whole year. Now we're, we're doing much better than that. And you'll see the very first line in bold, which if I were you, that's what I would most be interested in. What's the impact on my county? And so this year, we, we're working on eleven projects at a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Could be replacing a furnace, or it could be like the pictures here that you see, where we're really doing a whole house rehab. We go to a few sources for that funding so that we can make a real impact on the counties that we serve. And so the projects that we've done this year are in Algonah, of course, Wesley, Taitaka, Laverne, and Burke. So we're getting out into the community, thankfully, or out into the several communities. And so we want to be able to have that kind of, that kind of impact and continue that. The good news is that the state did expand how much money they're giving us every year to run, which is one of our primary sources to run this, this program. We also get money from the Federal Home Loan Bank as well. The state requires that we provide matching funds. If we don't provide matching funds, we don't get the money, and we don't get to have that kind of impact. So we ask the counties and several banks to help us to provide that, those matching dollars. The state alone is providing four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for next year. So we ask that the, the county of Cassuth provide three thousand dollars. That's our common match, except that we do ask one county for work because they're larger. But anyway, we like to have a, a match that has a real impact. In other words, if I were you, I'd be saying, yeah, I, I want people to be helped who are mostly elderly and disabled, but what kind of financial return do we get on that investment? And so we're got, we're providing a hundred and sixty-four thousand. If you compare that to three thousand, it's only one point eight percent. And not only do you, are you seeing what would normally be for a grant, a ten percent match, in other words, sixteen thousand dollars, you also get something that looks like this instead of this, you know, where that housing is being stabilized, which I think housing is a key element in every county, every economic development office I talk to, housing is a big deal, you know? Not only for the ones we fix, but we find that there's the broken window theory of, my neighbor's house looks terrible, why should I fix mine up? Instead, we get to the keeping up with the Joneses of, boy, Joe's house looks a whole lot better. I want, I better up my game. So we've seen a lot of things happen from that. And the good news, of course, with that is that the assessed values improve, and then, of course, the tax revenues improve, or at a minimum, they're stabilized. So that's what we want to see, you know? And I, I think of us as all being on the same team because we're all working to make North Iowa better for North Iowans, especially in Cassuth County. And so we ask for that three thousand contribution. Again, you're not alone, we, we looked to other sources for that too. And that's the same amount, we're not increasing it. We know that when, when Cassuth was working with, with Homeward Inc., that they were asking for five thousand a year. So hopefully, I, I'm hoping that you're seeing that as, you know, something that's making it a little easier on the county. And then we do have, I do need to turn in a couple, and I think we sent these, but our, our fiscal officer gave me these to share, but we do have like a past due bill on these. So I wanted to share that. That, that fifteen hundred dollars is owed from, from the last fiscal year, and then the three thousand is just for this fiscal year. So I'll turn those in to the auditor. Nice to see you in present day. We talk on the phone, I never get to see her, so this is nice. And here's my card.
Did you submit a request for the fifteen hundred, do you know?
I don't. I, I, I believe we did, but yeah.
Sounds good, I'll check with Melissa.
Okay, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to address those.
Thank you. For, for like a, a family such as here considering this, what are some qualifications that they have to meet to apply for the program and, and go about that?
Yeah, so, so number one, they need to be located within the Nyahcog region. So anybody in Cassuth County would be geographically eligible. They need to own their home, it's not a rental program. They need to have an income that's within the limits. And our income limit is fairly low, it's at fifty percent of area median income. I, I'm thinking that's, oh, gosh.
Twenty-seven thousand, probably?
Twenty, yeah, yeah, I think upper, is it after twenties or thirty? Sorry, I should have known that, I, I can certainly get that to you. But the truth is, I haven't administered this program for three years, and the numbers are not quite there right now. But I, I wanted to say thirty-three thousand, actually, I'm pretty sure. That's right, for a one percent. And then the income limit goes up with each increment of larger size. And we do prioritize the, the applicants. So we first help people who are elderly or disabled. We think that they're the people least likely to be able to go out and swing a hammer, at least likely, least likely to go out and, and improve their economic situation to be able to afford their own improvement. So we just prioritize them first. And so really, those are the requirements. And they just, they call Nyahcog directly. And the really good news, if you ask me about this program, is that there are other programs that have a lot of federal red tape to them, like historic reviews and things that really tie the hands of what we can and can't do. We don't have those with this program, I'm happy to say, so it works pretty well, by the way. Did I answer your question?
Yep, you did.
Okay. Any other questions?
You can do as many in Laverne as you want, anytime.
Oh, all right, all right. Okay, well, thanks for giving me the time to talk a little bit today. Really appreciate your support. And hopefully, we can continue to, this program really making great impact on the community.
Thanks, girl. Are you still teaching Sunday School?
I do, yeah. I do the, the high school.
Oh, yeah, yeah. RSVP is next. Come on up.
Good morning. I did email this to you also, but.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
See you.
Sorry, Cam. Good morning, I'm Deb Jordan, I'm the new Cassuth County RSVP coordinator. And I know many of you would have known Dawn. And so I'm sort of here to fill very large shoes. Dawn has been a great asset for me already at the beginning. She's been a phone call away, I got the letter last week and went, Dawn. And so she's been a great asset, as well as encouraging me to help make this position, help it be me too, it's not, not just her. RSVP is Retired Senior Volunteer Program, run by AmeriCorps. We have been in conjunction with Iowa Lakes Community College since nineteen seventy-seven. And so the goal of the, of the RSVP program is to provide seniors, well, not necessarily seniors, people over fifty-five. I'm getting close to that, so I, so people over fifty-five with volunteer opportunities, as well as providing the area with these volunteers. And I say it as a joint, it is such a great program. Before I moved here, I worked at a care center for a few years. And so I see the benefit so much to the population, to the retired population of volunteering. So I see it both ways. The paper in front of you shows just what the contribution RSVP has done for our community. All the different, there are seventeen different stations that we work with in the community and all the hours. Our person who inputs all of our hours has been on maternity leave, so she hasn't gotten everything input up until, we're not totally up to date. So I have four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two hours of service from September of twenty-two to August of twenty-three. That is a huge monetary difference to the community and all these different areas, the K through twelve success. So when we send in our reports to the government, these are the areas that they ask us to divide them up into the K through twelve success, the food pantry support, donation management, blood drive, and other community priorities, which sort of becomes many different areas that the community can be involved in. We have valued your support, we are in need of your support, and we do appreciate a continued support with you. I, like I said before, I believe very strongly that RSVP is not just something that enhances the community by people volunteering in them, but it also enhances the volunteer, which again, is another enhancement to the community. Any questions?
What are you requesting for funding?
Two thousand dollars is what it's been in the past, and I believe that is what.
Thank you.
Anything else?
It was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
We have Elder Bridge next, Lifelong Links.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
And I do think I put stuff in your packet for today that they had sent earlier, so I think.
I have my copies as well.
Yeah, no, yeah, go ahead. But I think there is some information in there too.
Well, good morning. My name is Sandra Jackson and I'm the Director of Lifelong Links with Elder Bridge. I'm actually based out of Mason City. I work a hybrid schedule. Elder Bridge, as you know, has a large coverage area. We cover twenty-nine of Iowa's ninety-nine counties. And Cassuth County is one of our largest geographic counties to cover. And so in the insert there, you have a breakdown of the services that we provided in Cassuth County over the past year, as well as the cost for services. And as a result, what you'll notice is that congregate, home-delivered meals, that is our largest budgeted programs that we provide in this county or community. Also, we have an increase in trend of personal care, which are individuals that are wanting to age in place, which supports our mission. You know, we want individuals to age where they want to be. And we're seeing an increase in your county of those individuals wanting to stay at home instead of enter nursing facilities or participate in some other type of community-based program like a waiver. So as a result, Elder Bridge utilized your funding last year to provide fourteen dollars and twenty, fourteen dollars and twenty cents in services for every dollar county funded for you guys. And so we believe we're good stewards of the money. Our COVID money ran out early because the demand was so high. And nutrition or that meal program was really the largest funded program that we provided. And so we're facing that financial cliff where we're really being aggressive with grant funds that we can access. And we appreciate the county funds so very much. And our goal for the coming year is to maintain and even increase coverage for this community with our budget. And we believe that we're on track to do that. So thank you all for your support. It means a great deal. And we appreciate everything that you guys offer as far as stewardship and advocacy for Elder Bridge. So thank you.
Yeah, do you have an amount you're requesting?
Three dollars and fifteen cents per senior, which is only a slight increase from last year.
How many seniors do we have?
Do you have a number on how many seniors?
No. Total served. I don't have that.
You do have population age sixty pluses, forty-seven, eleven.
So a slight increase from, yes, if we're twenty-two. Yeah. That's correct.
Four, seven. Fourteen thousand, eight, thirty-nine.
Fourteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine point six five. Yep. Oh. Yeah, you got fourteen thousand, eight forty here, so.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, gotcha.
Eight forty. On the. Any questions from board? Nice. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
What's that?
She does have that in the back.
Okay. Is the next one. Do you want a ten-minute break quick? Next one's planned for nine forty-five-ish, so.
It's not on the agenda.
I mean, yeah. We can be flexible, but if they're not here, we don't have anything.
Roger, I got something to show you. So my great uncle. Letter to Mr. Eldo B. Haff in Titanca. And the letter was from your church, Methodist Church. Mr. Haff, I'd like to congratulate you on being elected as the next mayor of our community. All of us know that this office carries a very responsibilities and obligations. As you later assume responsibilities and the obligations of the office, we wish you the best of service as you serve the welfare of this community, may the blessings of God be yours. From Reverend Max Swinton. Did you know him?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I just, he sent it to me the other day and, if you had your last service there, do you know?
Yep.
Yeah, that was right before that. And he didn't even know that.
Oh, he did, Max?
Well, no, he didn't know that the church was going through that that same week. He sent it to me, so, yeah. But I just thought it was kind of interesting.
Yeah. It's for sale. You want to buy a church?
Yeah. Is that, are you selling the building?
The diocese is.
Oh, okay. The corporate owns it? Yeah.
Yeah, they own the building. We own.
Sure.
They made that very plain.
I'm sure they did.
Yeah.
I'm sure they did.
I've seen some pretty cool renovations people have done to churches. Turn them into just like wedding venues.
That's what their couples wants to buy. They're talking about building a venue.
Yeah.
Orientated building.
So did you know Louis Haff then?
No.
Okay, I was mayor, he was mayor in the fifties.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Okay.
I wouldn't have been that long yet.
Sure, or cared about what was going on then.
Yeah, in Titanca. Because the only mayor I knew was Peevy Gardner.
Okay.
Yeah, and he was mayor the whole time I was a kid.
Okay.
In justice of the peace.
Okay.
Mayor and justice of peace.
I just.
The mayor was the justice of the peace in the, in the small towns.
Yeah.
Yeah, you didn't go to court from the county seat. You went to court from your house.
Okay.
He put his bathroom on.
Did I show you that?
My great. This is your great uncle?
That's my great grandpa, but my great uncle sent that to me. Couple weeks ago. Letter from the church to congratulate him. Roger's church, yeah.
Cool. That is interesting.
Yeah, I never, he, he actually died while he was mayor. From a heart attack in the fifties. When my grandpa was a little kid. Then the family moved before we said.
Okay.
Yeah, he ran the telephone, like Titanca Burke Community Gate and Zee would run, it was just Titanca or whatever, telephone company.
Interesting.
I got some connection to Titanca.
What date was that? Or did that have a date?
I've never met anyone that knew him. I've been, I've been to nursing home in Titanca all the time, playing for them and stuff.
Did you?
None of the old timers.
Did you know that he was there?
At all?
At, in time?
Yeah.
I never did till just a couple of years ago. I didn't even know I had any connection there. And he's actually buried there. And so is my, I didn't know my grandfather was buried there.
Wow.
Yeah, but.
Wouldn't I be the Methodist cemetery or?
No, it's the one south of town there on Blacktop.
Okay.
The general one, or Township Cemetery or whatever. Yeah, that was a member of nineteen fifty-five. I think he was mayor from like fifty-two to fifty-six or something and then died. Or I can't remember how. Yeah.
I thought they would have sent that at the beginning of his term. So maybe that on, I don't know.
Or that could be. Yeah, I guess, I think he was only there, maybe it was fifty-five to fifty-eight or something, yeah.
Well, stillness.
They lived in the telephone company building. Downtown there, same building.
Living fifty-five to twenty-five would be.
So nine.
Seventy. Yeah.
Nine o'clock was the one that there's almost fifteen hundred. A letter or something asked for the other fifteen hundred and he was approved. So that's why.
Oh.
Because originally you only paid, you approved fifteen hundred and then you did go ahead and give her the other. But I think what we'll have to do this year is after we've made the decisions on community for allocations, we'll have to send letters to them stating this is what the board decided. So we don't have that confusion.
Sure. Yeah.
I would like to apologize for sending you a bill after you put the check in.
No, no, don't apologize for that at all.
I got it. I was like, oh, we crossed somewhere.
No, it's just fine. It's all good.
Something got crossed.
It's all good.
That Wesley librarian there trying to help them.
Well, she's not only the librarian, she runs the community.
Yeah. She's important. She's very.
I'm a citizen of the month.
Yes, she is.
I'll be signing autographs after the meeting.
Okay. Well, we'll take.
I'll look for my, look for my baseball cards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are, are your autographs free or do they, do you charge?
I'm a librarian. I gotta make money sometimes.
Okay, just checking.
I'm not in it for the money. It's the fame and fortune.
Yeah, it is.
It's really just the fame.
The nobility.
So I did print my thing from last year so I could look to what we gave you because I can't remember what we gave.
If, if you guys would like to start early, you definitely.
You're ready for us?
You're next up.
Okay. Hand out the homework first. I'm Laney Mitchell. I'm from the Wesley Public Library. And these ladies, there's one gentleman, but he's not here today. We are the Cassuth County Library Association. You can have one too.
Thank you, Laney.
And so we're here to make some money like we do every year. And but first we'll start by thanking you. We'd like to thank you for your support for libraries. The county funding is so important to all of our libraries, I would say. We get funding from city, state, and county. And I think we can all agree that the state funding is. It's embarrassing, actually. So your county funding is really what allows our libraries to do what we do. So does anyone have anything in particular they'd like to share?
The technology grant, I'm Sandy Wong from the Whittmore Library. The technology grant is, really helps us stay up to date with our computer systems and with all of our equipment actually really is appreciated, yes.
And I'm Lori Walton from the Algonquin Public Library. And with the money you gave us last year, we did buy some additional computers. Those are used every day and especially after school, they're built. It amazes me how many people are coming in to use those computers. But we do appreciate it very much. Thank you.
I think it's something, it's important to have too, that even though when kids go to school, they immediately hand them a computer. That doesn't mean that that's what they use. I mean, they, they use our computers for fun.
Yep.
And I'm Lori Peterson. I'm the librarian over in Benton. And with the technology grant, we've been able to get a large screen TV, which has been wonderful because we've been able to use it not only for showing movies, but also I have STEM programs, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And I have three different groups from preschool up to middle school. And we've been able to use that to show demonstrations of the different projects that they work on. We were able to get a STEM grant through the state of Iowa. It's a great supplement to that. It's been a real godsend. I have a little floor I wanted to share and I think it'll probably be speaking for all of the libraries here, especially the little ones like Benton, about why libraries are really important to our communities. In Benton, we're a town of two hundred and seventy-one people, but we average about three hundred checkouts a month. So more than one per person. And every month, between four and five hundred patrons come into our library. And again, I'm sure this is true for all the libraries here. So how does our library make a difference? Just a couple of examples. We have a positively impaired gentleman. He used to self-isolate himself, never went out anywhere in town. Now he comes to the library for coffee at least several times a week. He feels warm. He feels welcome. He's starting to interact with people. Just this past week, I had an elderly woman who came in and her landlord will not fix her sixty-year-old furnace. And she's in danger of having this house catch fire. And so I was able to help her find legal and social services to try to help her so that she could try to resolve the issue. The kids of Benton, some of them sadly live in unstable and sometimes hostile family situations. So they come to the library, like Laney was saying, it's a listening ear. It's a safe place where no one's screaming at you or shouting at you or ignoring you. And they can read and they can relax and they can make crafts and they can use the tablets there for games. Or they can ask for help with homework. And I know that all of us provide those kinds of services. We have an adult book club with thirty members and it's an opportunity for adults to come together and talk about books. And many of the people who come have told me they've never read a book for fun before they joined the book club. So I mean, it really made a difference for them. We have a coffee and chat program and that averages about fifteen to twenty people every day that the library's open. And primarily seniors who don't get a chance to interact with other people at other times. So they're able to come in there, chat, you know, we're able to help them with technology issues, help them with resources that they need to find, you know, as far as Medicaid, things like that. It's the only place in our town where everyone, young and old, is able to gather and interact with one another. And our programs for children like STEM and the senior safety program for adults, they provide continuing education opportunities for the community. And every library throughout this county provides all of this and much more.
And I'm Lisa with the Westman Public Library. And just going off of what Lori said, the coffee corner, and it may sound unimportant, but as those people get together, it's a mental health thing too. And so that's so, not to be isolated, but to get together and relieve some stress just to talk. And so that is actually a lot of what our libraries do is we are that mental health service or social work service, when that's not really what we're licensed or, you know, licensed to, but we are, we are a social center, so.
Nancy from the Ledyard Public Library. We take those and shrink it way down. I don't know if any of you've ever been to Ledyard, but it's tiny. And, you know, our little library is important too. You know, just because we don't have as many numbers and everything as everybody else, you know. We all, I always get asked, on, you know, on the day that the state shuts down, are you going to be open? Yes, we're going to be open because why not? I mean, we just want to be there for them. So we appreciate you guys, yes.
Is it possible you could email me? Those stats are quite impressive. Could you email those to me? Those are wonderful stats. So I'd really appreciate it if you could email those so I can share with the board when they're looking at this later. I think those are great stats.
If there's anything we've got, it's stats.
Yeah.
The state makes sure of that.
Yeah.
They're a lot of fun.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that, that's just very impressive to know, you know, so thank you.
When you think of libraries, you think of books. And if you're not a reader, then you're like, whatever, what a waste of time and money. But I, the social services, that's what we are. But I mean, we're books, but I can't, I have more, I have a key ring in my pocket that has more keys to people's houses in Wesley than I have for my own. I don't know where my own house key is, but I have, can you be my lifeline? Can you be my lifeline? And sometimes, and I say this every year, when I'm open, I'm the only person those people will talk to. I'm the only other body that will, that's there. And otherwise, they just sit at home alone. And Wesley isn't getting any younger and my people keep getting older and cuter. But, you know, it's, it's just important that we're there. And your money helps us keep the lights on and the doors open for them.
And your money helps us keep the lights on and the doors open for them.
It's, yeah, it's a tremendous help and with the little towns like Benton and Lead Yard, you know, and the other little ones around here too, I mean, really, we're the only game in town. You know, we are the place where they can feel safe, they can feel listened to, they can feel welcome.
Bartender's got the books.
Although sometimes she bartends too.
We deal in books. So we just wanna thank you guys for your service, thank you for your time this morning, I know it's a long day. And thanks for listening to us now.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us? Anything else? We'll give you stats.
Sounds good.
Did you have a requested amount you were asking specifically or?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Five percent.
Sorry, see, I was.
It's in here somewhere.
Okay, okay, I got, thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you for your time, thank you guys for your time, have a merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Six thousand, five percent budget decrease. And six, or six thousand tech grant.
Oh, it's, it's a separate.
Yeah.
Numbers.
Good, yeah.
I think it was last year was five thousand tech.
Right.
Like, it was six.
Two hundred and seventy-three, seven forty-five.
It was six, no, it was five, it was five last year.
For the tech grant?
Um, it was seventy-two is what we gave them last year.
Seventy-two thousand?
For what, for the libraries.
A total.
Total, yeah.
So they're asking for a five percent increase of that seventy-two thousand, which would be?
No, uh, the seventy-two was tech grant.
No.
Total was it?
Oh yeah, seventy-two total tech grants, sorry.
Yeah, so it's from five thousand to six thousand is what they're requesting.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, and then.
I was thinking that was a separate.
Total.
Yeah, I was looking at the wrong thing too.
Total was two.
Two oh one, two forty-five.
They, they requested, they requested two seventy-seven?
No, they requested two sev- yeah, but we gave.
So they want about an extra ten?
We did, we did no, no increase last year.
They asked for quite an increase last year, from two oh one, two forty-five to two seventy-seven, three oh eight, and we did not give them the increase, we gi- we gave them the.
We gave them the tech grant.
Grant increase, but not.
We got one year left on our long.
I think one year left, I'll have to look for sure.
Is that going to end your budget?
I'll have to look, and I'll go with.
It might be, it's either one or two years, it might be two. I don't think.
Have to look.
I don't know that we did that the first year.
Well, I was thinking when I started, there was only like one or two years left, but.
I know, I know it was five years, so.
It's always one more.
I know, right?
If it was.
I'll look at that one.
I think it ends at point four, point five.
Okay, so this would be the last year that.
This, this might, this might be.
I know it's in my folder, so I'll work.
But that was five thousand a year for five years.
Okay.
For a total of twenty-five, because then they could get matching funds. They'd be eligible for state funding and stuff.
So they'd be looking at an extra ten thousand dollars then this year, at five percent of two hundred and one. Ish. Yeah.
And I, I don't, I can't speak for other towns because I'm not in other towns, but in Wesley, during the day, that is the hotspot. You know, I mean, that is where people go, there's still a library, otherwise the elevator, but.
Yeah, two eleven, three oh seven.
That is what it would be.
Yeah.
Two eleven, three oh seven.
Plus the.
Plus the tech grant.
Yeah.
Well, last year you had a total of two seventy-three, two forty-five, so that's a bigger request.
That's what they requested, we didn't give them that.
Going off of the rural basic, what you gave libraries in budget. Oh, that's including the tech grant.
Oh yeah, that's with the tech grant.
Yeah, that'd be total.
Yeah.
Cause he said it was two hundred and one?
Two forty-five.
Two forty-five.
Yes.
Plus seventy.
Plus the seventy-two.
Of that.
Yeah, five percent of that.
So that would be two eleven, three oh seven, plus the six thousand dollar tech grant, is what they're requesting.
This year.
This year, yeah, yeah.
We're talking about two different things, that's what we're requesting.
Fair, any association is mixed, but they're not here, so.
And then, um, Kyle and Josh, do you have your books to give to Brittany so she can quote new pages? And I think she's done with yours, Carter, Jack, and Rogers, your books, I think she's done.
I forgot to remind you.
Okay.
I'll, I'll throw it in the cart maybe.
And then, um, also, um, Western Iowa.
Okay.
Western Iowa Tourism, they are not on our list because we did not give them any funds. But I did put a copy of, yeah, of their request on your desk, so we can, we can talk about that later, today, or whatever you wanna do.
Who wants to?
So Western, um, Iowa Tourism, oh great, yeah, I can make it, or go ahead.
Oh, I can go, yeah. We got a few minutes.
Okay. But we didn't.
We didn't give them anything last year, yeah.
So I didn't have them on our thing today, um, but yesterday I got this letter in the mail from them.
Okay.
So I made copies and put it on your desk so that you can look at it, so. I need to bring more for the next, bring more tomorrow.
I got also congested yesterday, I don't know why.
Just about everybody is, good thing like.
And then, sorry, another thing I was gonna, oh, um, ten o'clock, yeah, so, uh. Can't remember his name, I just lost it, that's one of the things, Brittany came in, he is sick, he's not gonna make it at ten, so he's gonna send the information to us.
For the egg.
For the egg, for your egg.
Oh.
So we have till ten fifteen. And then, as far as tonight for compensation board meeting, Ryan Busky has sick kids, so he is gonna call in. So we'll open the conference line tonight before five, so he can call in.
Okay, um. It might be, but I mean, my, my suggestion would be doing something with the owl, because if you're on the other end of the line with the conference line, if people are in others or you can't hear them for anything.
My guess is if he has sick kids, he might not be able to do that.
I mean, he doesn't have to have video on, but like, I'm just saying, the, the microphones and stuff on the owl.
Like the audio.
They would pick up the audio farther back in the room than that phone will. It's, it's very hard to understand if you're on the other side of the line.
Then maybe I'll call him later and see if he, if that would work for him to do it that way and then we can send him an invite.
Yeah.
To do teams.
Teams meeting, you can have a phone number with it and stuff.
Okay, I'll call him and see if that would work for him.
Okay, just.
So we have till ten fifteen unless they come early.
Okay.
And Josh, I don't know if you heard me say, but um, I put Western Iowa Tourism request on your desk, we did not give them funds last year. So they were not on our list, but I got this in the mail yesterday, so I wanted to show it to you guys, they are requesting funds, so I know what you guys wanna do with them.
Do you wanna make a picture of that, Justin's socks covered? Fair egg aren't gonna be here, Tom?
No, he is sick and so he's gonna send in his information. Look, those were the two things Brittany came in to tell me was, one, he was not gonna be able to make it, and two, Ryan Busky with the cowboy. Can't remember whose representative he is. Um, I think he's Kieran's, um, that he has sick kids, so he's not gonna be able to make it in, but he's gonna cover. Oh, and. Now that I just think of this, um, Luke is on for eleven forty-five for Cassius Soil and Water Conservation and he is running a fever today and is self-sick, so I guess he won't be making that either. I forgot he was. Unless he's sending, I guess, unless he's sending somebody else, maybe he talked to somebody else, I don't know. He didn't tell me, he didn't mention that at all, he just said he wasn't, had a fever, wouldn't be in today, so.
Is a historical society coming in, or are they just doing their paper here?
They dropped it off yesterday, but didn't say they weren't gonna be here, so. I didn't talk to them, I already talked to them, but. So Lu- Luke may have talked to somebody else from soil and water, I'll text him and ask him.
Well, for, does anyone know anything more on the tourism stuff, I know the state's doing stuff, but is the?
We have tourism through a growing chamber.
Yeah.
So they're coming.
We've had, we've had that separate too for a while, um.
I didn't even remember that you had that today. It's not the first thing I think of when I look. I'm gonna have Brittany get ahold of Ryan and see if.
Can't, how are they gonna do the general supplemental next year?
First, I know none of this changes affect supplemental at all, it's just rural basic and general basic, they didn't touch supplemental.
It'll just be general basic?
And rural basic.
Don't get rid of supplemental totally?
They won't, not yet, that's not part of the bill.
Is that, is that part of the phasing?
No. It didn't touch supplemental. That's what we thought, that's what the fear was.
That, that was what they were talking in the beginning.
And that's why we were so nervous, because that's huge for us, but no, that is not part of it, so.
So what did they really change then?
It grows.
The growth limit, okay.
So if we, if we grow between, if we are under three percent, we'll be fine. If we're between three and six percent, they will dock us two percent. We're over six, I think it's three percent.
What if you go ten over?
You know, it.
You're dreaming.
Yeah, it's really gonna affect the, the counties that are over the three fifty, that, that's, the, what this, I think, the purpose of this is to bring them back down by twenty twenty-nine, by eight, twenty-nine, whatever that year is.
But supplemental didn't affect the three fifty?
You have to be at three fifty to use supplemental.
Included. That includes supplemental?
No.
No, you have to, you have to max out.
Different.
Well, it never did before, but how did, so what did it really accomplish, I guess, if you may?
Um, they're hoping that those counties that are above three fifty, they have to by twenty twenty-nine be at three fifty or less, they have to be by that next year. So, and then it's.
But there's no limit on supplemental?
Well, three ninety-five.
Total?
Yeah, for, plus, for supplemental, it's three fifty for general, three ninety-five for.
Supplemental.
Yeah.
I guess I'll say this before my board report because it ends at noon, but if anybody wants to bid on an auction item, uh, it's one of the things the wellness committee was doing is, or, or the courthouse in, in general is.
In the break room.
In, in the break room, um, there's a auction items there, if you wanna do that, so it's, ends at noon.
I bet I'm not able to go check, see if I still got it.
Oh, they even featured my melon again. I fixed it up for him.
Really?
Yeah.
Is that in the historical?
Historical museum, they got some really neat stuff in there. They, they had it donated, then they had me come in and fix some stuff on it, you know. What's that?
Someone's already requesting a copy of the ordinance that was passed today, well, technically it's not.
Oh, okay. It's all public records.
Yeah, I think it's actually on the website, but I'll ask.
You guys here for the care team? You guys here for the care team? I haven't been in that historical society building for a while.
Well, they got the schoolhouse there and then the one next to the Wells Fargo building is, got some random stuff in it too.
I've been in them before, but I've been a year or two.
I have.
Did you just outbid her?
Did you outbid me?
Well, someone else did it first and then.
Now, now you'll be outbid. It's, it's a ruthless, ruthless game.
She and I are gonna be running back and forth.
Just look out the back.
I can't, slide down. Oh, by the way, I outbid you too.
Me too?
Yeah.
She's just outbid every one.
I think Brandon Oswald, I'll have to go check, cause he bid twice on it. Maybe he'll outbid you. Uh, I think so, yeah.
What items are you bidding on?
I, there's a mystery box, I just, I just threw it.
So you know, there are people that come five minutes to twelve, will sit in there and watch those sheets.
It's over at one.
Oh, one?
I thought it was noon.
Says one on all the sheets.
Oh, it does?
I know. Well, whatever time it is.
Okay.
Okay, well, we know what we're doing before we come back to the meeting here.
The, yeah. The Kevin Cram, uh, silent auction, me and a gal were going at it over a, a RC. Monster truck, I wanted to get it for Lucas and we were going back and forth on that for a while, finally gave up.
Yeah, we can, we can start a care team if you guys are ready. Yeah, that works.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You wanna take one and pass it out?
Are they all?
They're all the same.
Is this yours maybe, the colored copy?
Yeah.
Okay.
The colored one, the fancy one. Um. So if you don't know, uh, my name is Ally, uh, clearly I run the care team, I've ran it since August of twenty twenty-one. Um, since I've taken it over, we have had immense growth as you can see in the charts, um, the numbers are next to the dates, so you just don't have to look at the lines, but, um. We are getting a lot of new families from, out of the country that are coming to us, so basically, uh, once they get to the country here, they come from Des Moines and then we're their first stop, so. They literally come with the clothing on their back, so we're able to provide them with clothing, household items, beds, anything you could imagine to give them more of a acclimated, um. Lifestyle here, so, um, we kind of pride ourselves in being able to welcome them to our community, um. We also, um, are seeing a lot of, obviously with inflation, we're seeing a lot of new families that have been living in the county, starting to come to us, um, to do things, so. You know, kids' clothing is expensive, so we're seeing a lot of families that in prior years probably would have never considered using the care team right now, coming into our doors, um, using our services, so we are, are having a lot more, um, in and out traffic. Um, although most of our stuff is, well, obviously all of our stuff is donated, um, but with certain items, we are having to buy them ourselves. If we're missing certain sizes or whatever, um, we will go out and purchase from Amazon or wherever if a kid needs a certain size coat or snow pants or boots, those seem to be the hot ticket items. With the snow pants and boots this time of year, so we do have expenses, um, regarding that, I know last year, um. We requested seventeen thousand, so I'm gonna hopefully go for seventeen or eighteen thousand this year. Uh, we did, uh, we do have, uh, with our increasing amount of people coming in, we do have to have somebody in the office as well who is a salaried employee to help out, just cause, um. If you've been to the care team, you'll notice that the line is out the door most, all the time and the parking lot is full, so, um, we do, we did have to have somebody come in and, uh, a salaried employee to help out. Um, as a side note, I'd like to spread this word if you're not on our Facebook page, if anybody has any recommendations for somebody that can snow plow our facility, we are still looking. We've had a couple of people look at it and they don't wanna take it, I don't know why, it's not that big, but if anybody would like to help out with us, that would be super awesome. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Maybe just a little bit, I'll just provide a little bit of, uh, information, cause you run the, you run Loving Hands Nursery too. And so as far as the care team, um, Ally's salary, she has somebody else that helps out once in a while, especially if she can't be there. Um, otherwise, it's mostly run by volunteers. For Loving Hands Nursery, um, it's all part-time, but we have a Sally, uh, salaried director, I think four to five paid staff and then. One to two volunteers, I think, um, so we do, I do the books there, um, mine's a volunteer role. So we do have a fair amount of volunteer, um, labor provided for the care team and for Loving Hands Nursery too. My wife has volunteered at Loving Hands Nursery for, I think, twenty years or more, so, um, just so you know, so it's not all paid staff, certainly a lot of volunteer help too, which we really appreciate. And we've been. We've been very fortunate, we live in a community, we do get a lot of, uh, other donations too, but, um, support from the, the county and the city. Is also critical to helping us, uh, fund, fund the operation, which I think provides wonderful, wonderful services to the community.
Thank you.
Where, where is Loving Hands Nursery? I'm trying to think.
It's in the Methodist Church.
Oh, okay.
On the.
Yep.
Yes, east side of Methodist Church there, in the education wing.
Okay.
There, yeah.
Very good.
Okay, are there questions? We do appreciate your past support and trust we'll have continued support as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Is the chamber gonna come in?
They usually.
They usually do, okay.
They didn't tell me they weren't volunteers.
Okay.
Um, they dropped off the flyers yesterday, um, and I wasn't. There at the counter, I marched it, um, but they usually do drop them off, but she said they didn't say they weren't coming, so I'm hoping they're still coming, but. It's hard to say.
Oh, however, never happened by time.
Good. I think they're just connected, I think. Right?
I'm not sure what you meant by that.
Oh, I thought, that's why he was bringing that, oh, okay.
I didn't know, that's why I was. Asking that, cause I'm like.
I don't know if it's kind of organized under the same entity, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Or share management or whatever, I really don't. Well, we probably don't have anyone else that can move up, do we? Luke's not coming for soil and water, so. I have that, um. Law library, are they sending anyone or did they send any information email?
I would have given it to you, they sent the information, all these people are ones that are coming as far as I know, they haven't told me that they're not coming. Um, except for. Like you said, Luke.
Yeah.
Forgot so about it and, uh, he'll present it at a later time, so.
A lot of sitting in here.
Yeah, I did get an email from. What's his name, Steve, from the law library. Yesterday, I think. And he said that they have not cashed the check from twenty-two, twenty-three. Which is a problem. Because we don't have the money to update this year. So.
Why did they not cash it?
Let me find his email and I'll tell you.
They thought they were just gonna hold on to it longer?
I think they were trying to find a reason to use it, but it doesn't really make any sense to me because. It'd make more sense just to put it in town and then, but.
Not, you don't have to spend it the second it gets.
Not everybody understands how government works either, so. Um, anyway, let me find his email and I can. He said he would talk about it today when he comes. He said, I am in the possession of the allocated check from twenty-two, twenty-three and the amount is six thousand that is yet to be cashed. The Wild Arberry was in a transition period this year and I didn't wanna cash the check unless we determined to satisfy three things to spend the money. I'm happy to speak more about the transition period at tomorrow's presentation. The Bar Association would like me to move forward and cash the check, however, before I move forward, I want to make sure whether the check will be cashed this week. So, uh, we don't have to make much commitment for that. Because the funds were in twenty-two, twenty-three, but.
And we didn't have anything for twenty-three, twenty-four?
Well, I don't know if we did, but it wouldn't have been enough to cover six thousand dollars yet. In addition to whatever.
I feel like they didn't have a request last year.
They might not have.
They, they didn't.
So. Oh, I can look, it's right here.
No, they wanted zero.
Zero.
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, zero, so.
Yeah.
There wouldn't be any in that one night of the year. So.
I don't know why they would have held on to the check, they would have thought you could have just kept the funds in the bank account and said, we don't need any again.
Which is fine, we'll figure it out. The money was allocated, we'll just have to move it into this, but.
Yeah. Well, since, since it wouldn't have been spent originally, it just got put into the carry forward.
Yeah. This fifteen minutes is too long. We need to move them down to five, but it increments next year or something, I don't know.
Well, some of them do use up their fifteen minutes and then others.
Yeah.
You just only need a few minutes and then.
Too bad we have the employee longevity at one on the agenda, so there is we can move that up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, do I need to sign in?
Oh, you can, that would be great.
We are ready for you.
You are ready, okay.
How are you doing today?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Not too bad. Wherever you wanna start.
Whenever I wanna start, well, um, first of all, thanks for continuing to support the tourism initiatives, by paying dues to Western Iowa Tourism. Um, they have. They have kind of some new marketing strategies in place, um, there's an opportunity, I don't know if any of you saw. This publication that was put out last year, we had a really short window of time, didn't get anything in for Cassupsoil County, but. Um, we will be doing that for this year, so that's where some of the money that you allocate, the remainder that comes to the chamber, that's where that would, would help pay for that, so. Otherwise. Um, we try to, a lot of the meetings for Western Iowa Tourism are way in southwest Iowa, we don't get to a lot of them, but. They have, um, a package to make a proposal to host a meeting and I'd like to do that up here because I think sometimes we don't get the recognition. This far north, this far. Into Cassupsoil County, so when they have, when they put out the bands, I'm going to put in a proposal to host one of the regional meetings. So that would also be a place to use some of the tourism dollars. So, pretty, pretty simple, I mean, when you think about the marketing and how we have, you know, the nativity scene and the POW museum and. The Ag and Motorsports Museum and, you know, those places are all available to set up tours if we bring in a group, so that's. That's the nice thing about it when you don't have attractions that are open and staffed. Year round. But those, the entities that are in charge of those locations are always real willing to work with us, so. It's a great way to get the word out.
Do you work with the state, um, for their Travel Iowa website?
Yes, yeah, we met with, uh, there's a new person that was assigned to our area and Amy and I met with her last year and. And we do submit all of our events and stuff into that, so it's on that calendar.
Okay. I think last year we had talked, there was, um. Potential that Western Iowa Tourism was going to be absorbed by the state, is that still a possibility or are they staying?
Happen, I, I haven't heard any updates on that, um, the director of Western Iowa Tourism is really good about keeping the region and updated on that, I. I don't believe that that is still on the table. I mean, that's not.
Think it's, it's not.
No.
Not planned?
Not planned, as, that I'm aware of anyway.
Okay. Good to know, um, any other questions from the board or anything else you'd like to share?
I'm open for questions, if I don't have the answers, I can get them, but I, you know, I think it would re- be really sad if the state were to absorb the regions because I think we have a lot of small. Attractions, not just in Western Iowa, but throughout the state that would, would suffer because of that, um. The region directors are very, very dedicated to, to their region and they do a nice job of promoting all of the attractions.
And how much?
Yeah, did I miss how much?
How much are you requesting?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, I just assumed that it's the set. Oh, I'm sorry, I just, I just assumed that it's the seven fifty and then out of that. You guys pay the, the dues to Western Iowa Tourism and then the remainder comes to the chamber. So I think it's like last year.
They, they requested five hundred and then two fifty to Algonah.
Okay, cause last year we didn't give any to Western Iowa, but we did give three hundred to Algonah.
You didn't pay the dues?
We did not last year.
Oh, okay.
So, that's why I'm kinda confused, no, that's fine, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding how it works.
If I were to request that you continue to pay the dues, um. For what reason did you not last year, cause honestly, uh, the chamber is also a member. Individually at Western Iowa, but I. I was not aware that you didn't pay them.
That was mostly because of the um. Fact that we thought they were going to be combined with the state, if I remember our discussion correctly last year.
If I were to request that, if I check with the director and make sure that's off the table, um, would. Would you consider reconsider then paying the dues so that Cassuth County is a member?
I think that'd be important to know, yeah.
Okay, and I apologize, I wa- I was not aware that that didn't happen.
No, that's okay, um, and we did get information from them, they did send it, I got it yesterday.
And the dues are?
Uh, they are requesting five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that, are you reading that?
Yeah, very top, that's what they requested.
Okay, well, like, is it okay if I? Check with the director of Western Iowa Tourism?
Yep.
Ask some questions, get some additional information, then can I just email Tammy or would I need to come back?
Yeah, yeah, just email Tammy, she can send that to us.
Yeah, so are you? I'm, I'm sorry, so if we give them five hundred, are you requesting? Three again or two fifty, okay.
The three is what we got last year.
Yes, right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I apologize for that misunderstanding, I was not aware that they had not invaded.
No, that's fine.
And then maybe that might have slipped through the cracks at the Western Iowa Tourism office too, because it's funny, she didn't say. Can you check with your supervisors? Okay.
Yeah.
I will get some information from Shirley and then I will get back to you, Tammy.
Perfect, and I will share it with the board then.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you for your time.
Yep, thanks, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas to all of you.
Did I hear you retiring?
The end of this year.
End of the year, okay, okay.
Yep. So.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, congratulations.
Hold a chapter.
Thanks, thanks for all your years of service.
Well, you're welcome, it's, it's been very enjoyable, so.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like it's been as long as it is, sometimes it does.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'm still learning how all this works, you know?
Yeah.
Who's, who's connected to who and how it, you know, affects.
Right.
Same thing.
Well, I think we, last year, if I remember the discussion correctly, all of us were under the impression that they were completely separate entities. One didn't really affect the other.
Yeah.
I, I do remember a conversation about them. Being eliminated or taken over by the state or questioning if they're even gonna be.
Yeah.
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 Good morning.
Good morning.
Have Roger or Jack, have we ever given to other chambers in the county or just Algonah?
Like Bancroft or?
Yeah, like any other smaller communities.
Do we give to Algonah because of the tourism aspect, because it, in parentheses, um, everything I have it says tourism.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I think that's what it was always.
Is there a? Are there, other than Bancroft, are there other communities that have a chamber?
I don't know who all does, but I knew Bancroft.
Russley does.
You have a chamber, huh?
City Hall, it's like, oh, thank you. No, we do not, never mind.
Thank you.
Maybe there's not that many others.
I guess I never thought about that.
I mean, they do.
Swiss city or type?
I don't think that does.
Okay.
Do we need a sidebar up here?
No, you can't, we want to.
You can, but it's okay, um, otherwise, yeah, we're, we're ready for you.
Alright. Well, I'm Cassie Cunningham, I'm the sexual assault program supervisor for Crisis Intervention Service, so I cover fifteen counties. And um north central Iowa.
I am Amanda Jensen, I am the sexual assault advocate for Cassuth County, I also cover Winnebago and Hancock County as well. So I am one of the two advocates, we have domestic abuse advocate as well, her name is Sharon Ray, who works. Um, with the agency and covers Cassuth County as well. So, um, and then McKenna Hamley is our homicide and other violent crimes advocate, that she covers Cassuth as well. So she, I've got to say, I covered Cassuth County. Oh, this is why I brought her. Sometimes my brain gets a little confused, I told her this morning, I was, I was driving, I was like, oh, I'm not going to Garner. I'm going to Algonah, this is what happens to me, so never mind, just ignore me, this is why. Yeah, so, um, we offer lots of supportive services here within Algonah and Cassuth County. We have a good relationship with the Algonah Police Department and the Cass- Cassuth County um Police Department and also the County Attorney's Office. Um, offering many supportive services, whatever, um, a victim of crime is wanting from us. So, it's kinda gives them a safe place to talk to somebody. Um, with a hundred percent confidentiality, knowing that whatever they talk to. Me or another advocate about is going to be strictly between us. Um, and as, you know, as you're reading in here, kind of what we did to help. Um. Those who live within Cassuth County. Lots of um supportive services and resource referrals, uh, I know Sharon is working. And she has a domestic abuse um support group. And then I am getting started a um sexual assault. Um, support group for here within um Cassuth County and Algonah specifically. I know Sharon has hers in at the um alcoholic and alcoholic anonymous um building. And then I have ours in our office, which is uh across the street from. Bishop Gergen Elementary School side of it, so.
And I think Amanda doesn't give herself enough credit too, sometimes with her support groups and everything like that. Um, she kind of went a little bit of a different direction and normally we do host those support groups or we at least try to get those people in for groups. Um, but Amanda's kind of taken a different thought process on prevention side of pieces. We are technically not funded for prevention, but we still go out and do that because we believe that that needs to happen. Um, so she's been speaking with many, many of the schools and is doing a little bit of a program, it's just kinda getting up and started. Of reading books to youth, so they will do an activity when she goes in and reads these books. It is not just about sexual assault or domestic violence, um, but it's about healthy relationships, bullying. Just kind of being there for one another, teaching kindness and everything to the very young kids, elementary.
Yeah, I've actually, in Winnebago County, I will be reading at Lake Mills School tomorrow, it's set up for tomorrow morning, so. That's, um, and just getting in there and really talking to the youth about like, hey, this is. Cell phone safety is a huge thing, right? Um, I know Sharon was um last week and again this week, working with Colleen Bowman at the middle school and going in there. Um, and speaking with um the eighth graders, I think, last week, um, just about. Um, healthy relationships, you know, like. And relationships, trusted adults and things like that, right, and it's not just like romantic relationships. Relationships with everybody, right, like, we need to treat, be treated a certain type of way. And we need to treat others a certain type of way, right, um, and learning those boundaries little when they're younger, um. But yeah, so that's kind of like works in processes. Um, we do tag along with law enforcement here in Algonah, um, when they do their presentations as well at the schools for the youth.
And I think that's one of the biggest things that we are having to change too as laws change. And the schools are a little weary of our, of coming in, um, and using some language that. Maybe they can't anymore or uncomfortable with using, we've kinda changed our, our prevention strategies to. To really open it up, but what happens is when we do that, we actually end up with referrals for youth. And one of their favorite things that I think we both enjoy is being able to be that confidential um person for youth. A lot of times the abuse is happening within the home. And so we are not mandatory reporters, we're permissive reporters. So what's nice about that child being able to speak to us is we don't necessarily react super quickly. Because sometimes getting law enforcement involved or getting DHS, DHS involved that quickly can actually do more harm to the child. So we are able to meet with that child, come up with that safety plan and actually have something in place. For when law enforcement is called and DHS is called. Um, because the last thing we want is a child to stay in a home when something's unfounded, you know, through DHS, so we wanna make sure that we have a safety plan, so. That's one of our favorite things that, yeah, I think that we enjoy.
The best part about it is being that confidential person that they can talk to and talk through things regardless of somebody's age, you know, um. And, yes, there are things that we, we can't say to other, and I get the question all the time, well, what if somebody comes and tells you something? Terrible, or like they're suicidal, or they wanna hurt somebody else, or whatever the case may be, it's. Yes, I can't, I don't react right away, where somebody who is a. Mandatory reporter is going to react in a cer- there's a certain kind of structure that they have to go by. And for us, we're able to say, okay, we see what's going on. Let's get you to a place where you can make that decision for yourself, um, that is going to be safe for you. And so, when somebody feels as though they are in control of what's going on, especially when. Violence is involved because that power is kind of removed from them and taken from them, they're able to stand up and say, hey. My power is back, right, we give them their power back that was once taken from, you know, we know that not everything's there. And so, it's nice to be able to be that person.
And also be able to communicate with them everything that, that their options are. And so then they, they know what they're getting into, they know what's going to happen, you know, once they report. Um, and just, it's less scary and then we actually get a better report out of them, um, once that time comes. And it usually happens pretty quickly, and I think that's sometimes too what people will judge us a little bit, it's because we don't react that quickly. But that's actually quite terrifying, for, and then they usually end up shutting down and the report's never made. So that we're already there and that's what's important about being in the schools and being able to. Commute, have a fantastic relationship with, with faculty and, and counselors. Do you guys have any questions about?
Appreciate the information, um. Is there? Any questions from the board?
We had the note on the sheet, so.
Yes, we just put all that information, on the backside of it, it goes into very specific, or more specifics about Cassuth County um. In general and what our agency um spends here, but then there's still an overview of what our agency doesn't pull.
Appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you wanna see if. I don't know if he's offered in. Brian Dume or whoever could move up to it, or, doesn't matter?
Um, for the.
Well, cause we have a brain, I mean.
Have a great day, guys.
You should have you too.
Yes, I'll go grab. Um, okay, so I'm missing where they're asking for the amount, where.
I'm not someone to die in the back. Yeah.
Oh, one C, okay, thank you. Um. The only contact I have for the law library is Steven at Pharmacist Mutual, I don't have a phone number, I just have an email address. Yeah, and um. Historical society, is there anything on that information?
Probably Jan Ricky. They didn't have an amount in their packet.
They usually come in and.
Yeah.
Tell us, but.
Uh, yeah, seven thousand.
Oh, I, I read the whole thing and skipped the first line, okay, nevermind.
I'll look at those calendars quick, um, there is a cell phone number on the top of the letter if you wanna see if they wanna come early for those.
The.
Historical.
You wanna try, yeah, if you wanna try.
If, if they're. I'm assuming they're coming, maybe.
Cause yeah, we'd be, in other words, we have a half hour here.
Hi Jan, Carter Math here, how are you today? Good, hey, um, you guys are scheduled to come in at eleven fifteen. Um, and I just didn't know, is there a group of you coming in or just you or? Okay, well, we were running quite a bit early this morning, so just didn't know how feasible it was to, um. Okay. Yep, no, no worries, whatever. Alright, thanks Jan. Bye. So they could be here about eleven.
Did you get a warrant?
I just called Jan Ricky, she said they could be here about eleven. Thank you.
I don't need one.
Um, I'm okay, I.
I'll take it, just in case. Do you have any extra? Binders? Just empty binders?
Yeah, if you wanna come with me, I'll show you, and then you can help yourself do whatever you want.
Apparently the museum was a school. And it was purchased by the Grand Army of the Republic and moved to its current location in eighteen eighty-seven. Could you imagine moving a building like that in eighteen? in eighteen eighty-seven. Could you imagine moving a building like that in eighteen eighty-seven? They didn't quite have the equipment back then that they do today.
Have you ever seen the Amish move a building?
Yeah, they pick it up.
Yeah, just line, line the whole thing with people. Very impressive.
Museum was moved to where it's at now.
Yeah.
Cause it was an old school, but.
Yeah.
In eighteen eighty-seven.
I think I knew that. I forgot, but I think I knew that.
I couldn't imagine what it would've taken back then to build the building.
I can't either. I'm gonna email Stephen, I don't know, he's welcome to come anytime. I don't know. I'll open, check his email, but. Thank you, Ray.
Present your notes up Kyle.
Okay.
Get that bunch of binder on here.
I'll, I'll bring it, I forgot this morning again.
For these papers part here. That's your old.
I told her not to throw them away, just to give them to you and you could decide what you do with them.
I'll be nice, I always take mine out. So it'll make it easy for her.
Wow, it's so cold.
It's cold?
Yeah, with the doors closed, it's always, it's always a nice break in there.
It's like our bedroom closets.
Yeah. Did you find what you needed, Carter?
Yes, yes. We don't have a three hole punch in the boardroom.
No.
Okay, I might just have, I'll have to borrow the one there.
Yeah, there's an electronic one, otherwise I'd just move it, but you gotta plug it and all that stuff, so.
Since we'll probably have downtime off and on to workshop. Give me some time to organize things. What do I say?
Um, the teller, um, will ask for it to be on agenda, so, um, she will call.
Okay. Sure. Yep, yep.
If it came from you, then yeah, you could have an explanation, but since it's a request from somebody else, you think it's better that way.
This sheet is basically in place of this sheet last year, or no?
What? No, it'll be separate. I just gave you that because I wasn't sure if you'd have your books in front of you yet, and we haven't changed that.
All those things, yeah, yep.
So no, you'll have one just like that.
Did you break your binder?
My binder's a little rough shape.
Oh, we can get you a new one.
Good enough for who it's for.
What? What did you say?
It's a good enough for who it's for.
Okay. Well, because there's plenty back there, Carter, so we can get you another one.
Sounds good. You're back.
For another issue.
I'll go grab you one, Carter, and whenever you want to change, you can. Then I don't forget to get.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for the story. The story, yeah. But I mean, even so.
While they're actually gonna come in. Like that one, I don't know if they have. Depends, I mean, in his email, he said he could talk about the check that they had in cash, so he's probably gonna be here.
Okay, okay.
But if they come in, then after that, we'd be done. Cause Luke's sick, he's out sick, unless he got someone else.
Oh, does he usually come in to do it? Oh, okay. Thank you. Is someone else gonna do this or online?
No, I asked him and he, I mean, said he forgot about it, um, um, but asked if he could do it another time. He said, that's my thing. He's not here today because he hasn't been here.
Yeah, yeah. No, no worries, I just curious.
Yeah, no, I texted him, asking him the same thing. He said.
Okay.
No, he forgot about it, that he would do it another time if that was okay.
Sounds good.
That's just from.
You're good.
So after the library, we'll be done. So I was just reading that Scott County Board of Supervisors broke the law. They voted to reject the recount for boards. Report for a school board race. And after the county attorney told them the law was clear, then they need to prove it.
Really?
Yeah, and so now.
Scott County, that'd be Davenport?
I think so. And they've had problems over there with elections in the last couple of years.
Okay.
So, but this one, I haven't finished reading out of the one that she was yet.
So guys running ahead of time, huh?
Yeah, we are. We're just that efficient. At least we can tell ourselves that, I don't know how true it is.
No, Carter, last year I was here early and you got around break and you're like, oh, what are you doing here already? So come on, we're just waiting on the wild this time. So Tracy's really coming. Did you guys get the packet?
Did, yep, I read through it. I was trying to remember what business is in the Jan's building now.
It's, um, it's Sarah Beer's dad.
Oh, the purple pin cushion?
Yeah, except it's called Cottage Dodge.
For Cottage Dodge.
Yes, Cottage, it's the pur- purple pin cushion. She basically does shows.
Right.
And stuff with others. It's just, I think she's only open like once a month.
Okay, okay.
Basically stores stuff there.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so she's been a very good runner.
Yep.
Just right in time every month, you don't have to worry about it. If she's gonna be a day late, she lets me know. She's gonna get up, down or something, so kind of like.
Yep, yep, for sure.
Well, it's eleven, so we're just, Tracy can drop in there. So, um, so Jan Ricky, President of the Historical Society. Um, this is, um, Rachel Fox, Jean Kramer, I know those two. It's, oh, Tracy Stewart from Wesley, it is, is out of his way. So anyway, um, so we're asking for seven thousand dollars. Um, as you know, um, as you look through the budget and stuff, it took, your, you gave us six thousand dollars last year, it took all of that to keep everything going at the Histor- at, at the Historical Society, um, along with, um, some other income that we have. But, um, in order to keep, uh, these are very historical buildings for just out of Alona, but Cassup County, we, we hold, um, the, was this a schoolhouse from out, um, that was in, out in Alona? It's on the national, hi Tracy, it's on the national, it's on the, did you guys know Tracy Stewart?
Well, yep.
Um, anyway, um, it's on the National Register of Historic Places, so it's very important to keep that building up. And there's always something seems like that needs to be added to that building. Um, this year we had to put a new roof on it. We did get a grant from, um, Hager Two Goods for a big portion of that, which was, was really nice. Um, so, um, like I said, it's on the National Register, um, it's, it's only the only, uh, there's only fourteen two-story wooden schoolhouse, uh, schoolhouses left in Iowa, and this is the only one that's in use, so it's got a very historic, um, element to it as far as the state of Iowa goes too. So, um, our second building is the Dr. Jancy Building, which, uh, we rent out and, um, it's been pretty much self-sufficient. We've had a few little mind-up issues with it this year, but it's been pretty good, unsoled and stuff. And then, um, the other building is the Wells Fargo Building, which we, um, handles all, the upstairs handles all our paper items, like books, um, pictures. I mean, Jean Kramer has been working tirelessly all year long, trying to get everything organized and, and, cause it kind of got put in a disarray when we, especially when I switched over as president, cause Amy Franco was president, she was kind of keeping it up and I was kind of like busy with so many other things, cause we were putting a new basement in and doing all this, I just didn't get around to it. So Jean has been very, very helpful in helping us, um, get everything on the computer and organized and stuff. So that building has been pretty good. I mean, I think we're, it's gonna be pretty close to having a, a roofing issue on it, so it's, um, I know, um, our candidate was Craig Simon. Anyway, he said a few years ago that it's probably gonna be looking for a new roof before long, so, um, that's an issue that may be coming up, we don't know, but definitely that's something we're gonna have to keep an eye on because of the, of the paper products that are in that building and in that, in that upper storage, so, so, um, we'll keep an eye on that. And then, um, this year, the two front, um, windows of the Wells Fargo Building broke. Um, they, um, I don't know what the deal was, they both, I thought first that some kids came by, broke it, cause I found some beer, beer hidden underneath some bushes out in our little garden area. And I thought, but shortly after that, thought, oh, the window's broke and stuff, but they broke on the inside. So yeah, I don't know, the what, the building shifted a little. Building a little shift or something. I put a display up there, there's too much heat got there or something. Anyway, so we had to replace those, those two big windows and we replaced them with, um, tempered glass and e-glass so that we can put the items in there so that they don't fade and stuff, so. So, um, otherwise that building has been pretty good too for us, you know, we haven't had to put much into that. We, um, as far as the, some of the things that we've done this year, um, we had our annual meeting at Wesley and, um, Tracy, um, went over his new book that he wrote out about the history of Wesley. And so at that time, we added two new board members, these two, to bring some younger people into our, cause they're all getting kind of older and, um, and it's harder. I mean, I'm probably one of the, besides them, I'm kind of on the young, but Jean younger than anybody. But she, we should not on the board, we should not on the board. But anyway, I'm, I mean, I'm gonna be seventy-five, so anyway, I'm, it's harder for us to keep everything going. We're just volunteers, so it's kind of nice to have these younger, bringing in some younger. And they have new ideas too and stuff that, you know, we kind of get settled into somewhere on ideas. We kept, we have kept the building, we closed that, we'll close down first of January now till the first of April, just so we don't have many visitors during that time and kind of keep, keep bills down and stuff. So, but we will be in there working, doing things and stuff, but we're just kind of, and so, um, and we switched to Tuesdays and Thursdays. We were open on Saturdays and Sundays, kind of keep in line with the other museums, but it didn't seem like it got up to our, um, our, um, visitors much, so, but we switched Tuesdays and Thursdays, it seemed like we got more visitors. And in the back of my mind, I thought, well, if you go to the POW mu- museum, you probably are brain, brain fogged, trying to get done with that. You probably don't go and go through another museum, or if you go through the egg museum, and I don't think anybody could basically want to do three museums in one, in one day, so. So we switched to Tuesdays and Thursdays, which kind of freed up our weekends and stuff, and it seemed like it upped our, our visitor count. Um, one big event we did have was, um, the, um, the cemetery walk down at, at Riverview. They featured, um, this cradle that belonged to the Call family, that's state of the Call family. Ambrose Call's, seven of his eight children slept in that cradle. And so we got that last year and they featured it at the cemetery walk, and so we had, I think, close to two hundred people come in that, just that weekend, Founder's Day, just to see the cradle and see the museum. So that was a real, a real good thing. Um, we had, we had, like I said, replaced the shingles on the museum. We went over to Wesley and Tracy did a cemetery walk at those two, at those two cemeteries over there, which I was really surprised that, um, a lot of people didn't know there's a grado at the Catholic Cemetery over there. So they, a lot of people got informed about that and Tracy did a very nice job and, and, and that. We got, I don't know, did you guys all get a brochure? So we got these new brochures, this is something we've been kind of, well, we got the museum kind of in place, so you can see that we have a really a nice, I, I think everybody's really impressed when they come into the museum. If you guys haven't been over there for a while, you need to come over. I think the last time you were over there, Carter, we didn't have you in the new flooring, did we? Or you did your recital thing, I think, we had all that.
That's already been a year and a half ago.
Yeah, yeah. So I can, if you can see, this is, um, I thought they turned out very nice and, um, nice and colorful, so we, we passed those around, um, to different places in the county and, um, and, um, like up at Chamber and, and stuff, so. So hopefully, um, that's to draw some more people to come. We have applied for grants at the community, from the Community Foundation, which we should, I think they release Friday, I think is when they're going to release the ones that get the grants. We're gonna try and get another, we have a computer that's upstairs in Wells Fargo showroom, we're gonna put another, we're gonna get another computer just in the main museum building, basically, so we can get, cause none of that items that are in that, that building are on the computer. We have it all, there's, they're all, um, in, on sheets and like, I think we have seventeen or eighteen three-ring binders, polar sheets for each item that's in, in that, but if somebody comes in and says, where's Grandma so-and-so's, it's like, oh, let me see, you know? So if we get all this stuff on the computer and have it right there. So if we can get all this stuff on the computer and have it right there, you know, it'd be so much nicer. And then another aspect of that would be that, um, um, we wanted maybe take a video or something of the, the up, the two floors, the upper floor and basement, and so that, if people that can't do the stairs, we don't, cause we can have an elevator, they can kinda scan through and see what all we have, so. So that's what, so, um, we want, so, um, hopefully we'll get that, and otherwise we'll just, I have to take it out of our funds, but that's one thing we wanna do, is get that done this year. Um, like I said, we did the windows at the Wells Fargo. We kept up our newsletter, and we had, um, we haven't missed a, a monthly board meeting, except for January, we just kinda, kinda combine our, our monthly with our annual. And then, um, and we have a Facebook page, and, um, and we have, we, we don't have any hired staff, it's all volunteers. Like I said, we're all kinda get older and stuff, so, so some of the stuff, we made, like, we've, we've switched to have, we used to just shovel our own walk in the wintertime. We, we haven't hired them now, just because we just, I was, I was up there shoveling the walk at seventy years old, you know, and stuff's like, nah. So, so anyway, we have that, we're sorta having that done and stuff now, and, um, and stuff, so. Oh, then, um, another thing, um, the, 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 um, the Wells Fargo Building, going back to that, the, we have these two double front doors that actually on, on the night of the greeting card windows, they actually stuck shut and we couldn't, I mean, we couldn't get in, I mean, it's like, we couldn't, we couldn't get them open. I mean, they were just stuck and stuff, so, gradually, eventually, we just, we had to help people coming to the back door and stuff. Eventually, I think they got, got them open, but, um, those doors, I mean, just need to be worked on. I mean, they have a panel on the bottom, there's a crack in the panel, you can see light through the panel, and they're just kinda like, something like this, because like, it's tight at the top and it's gapped down to about quarter inch wide down at the bottom. And so I think they just, they just basically, probably the hinges, and we need a new, new, I, I don't wanna replace the doors. I really wanna see if we could just keep those doors, you know, fixed up and, and, um, stuff, so. And I don't know how much that would cost, I don't, I have no idea, or who would even get to do that, but that's one thing we're, we're gonna have to look at this year. As, as, as far as, um, bugs and everything, you know, just not the heat element and stuff, but bugs and stuff like that, moisture. So, do, do you guys have any questions about anything, or did you guys want to add anything?
I would just add a couple things.
Thank you.
Underscore, then it's the Cassuth County Historical Society, you know, not just the Algonas Historical Society. You know, Algonas is a hub for obvious reasons, but this organization has been very good about offering programming countywide. We've had programming in St. Benedict, we've had programming in Wesley, we have something coming up in Fenton, so to the extent that the other towns in the county, their communities are interested in being a part of this organization, we're very good about reaching out to them, so it's not just an Algonas organization, it's countywide. Um, Jean, Jan alluded to, you know, we're, the upkeep on the older buildings, you know, it's, they've been around a long time, they're expensive to upkeep, there's a lot of work, but there's historical significance to using those buildings to house our collections. This means a lot more when you're able to display items in like the historical context of the era from which they were acquired, you know? It's really, we're fortunate, Cassuth County to have a grand army of the Republic Building, it's still in good shape, it's still being used. We have a lot of, a lot of our documents and our displays there, and it, I think, to me, it's, it's important to keep that building foundationally sound because it can be here for a long time, and just like anything else, it takes money, and you guys know that stuff doesn't get cheaper as time goes on, you deal with that every day, but that's the reality that we live in. But to me, and to us, I think it's, it's important that we keep those buildings in operation because they really do matter.
Anything, Rachel?
No, I agree, I agree totally. I mean, as far as, like, all the important papers are, and, and like she said, photos, books, all that stuff is, is in the Wells Fargo Building, so it's really important that we do take care of that, so.
And Rachel has been helping Jean with the.
Digitizing.
Digitizing of everything, so, so. Actually, we just got the Centennial Parade digitized and stuff, got those maxed, so, yeah. So we have a, a more, um, safe place for them, they run like sixteen millimeters, so.
And you just did an event for that.
What?
You just did an event for that too, to show the.
Yeah, we did, we did, we did do a bit of that, yeah. So, um, do you guys have any questions?
I guess I wasn't aware that, uh, the Edus Cradle, there, there's a book titled Edus Cradle, and that same thing, I was.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's an interesting story too, and how, how they even found the cradle.
Yeah.
And got it to us.
Yeah, 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 you came from, they shipped it from Pennsylvania.
Okay.
So, um, one of the great, great granddaughter, Ambrose, had it, so. So, and that Edus Cradle is out, early Algonas, could name the book Edus Cradle, and in the back, there's a picture of that cradle. And then there's poem is in the back, and.
So I have a book.
She tells about, sorry, she tells about every one of these children, it's her siblings that slept in this cradle and stuff. It's really interesting, isn't it?
It's a good book to read, yeah.
Yeah, it tells, yeah, if you guys ever, we have a, for sale over there, but if you ever, you get a chance to read it, it's, she tells, this, um, Florence Call, she tells about living in Algonas as a young child.
With the environment and, and the weather, things like that, interesting fact.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, um, anything else, anybody?
What's the oldest map you have?
The oldest map?
Just curiosity.
Well, it depends on, we've got some old ones about Algonas. Um, we have an eighteen ninety-six plat book in color, which is the earliest plat book in the county. That's very interesting, and, and, and. I guess I'd have to look, off the top of my head, I don't know, but we have quite a few old maps over there, so.
Yeah, we do have quite, we do have another old map.
Yeah, and it's nice actually that not just the oldest ones, but, um, as we go through the centuries, you know, since that time, um, it's nice to see the progression, to be able to compare them, to see what's grown, what's, you know, what's different now. Um, I always think it would be nice to be able to come, if you could travel back in time to see what this area looked like before, because we've moved so much land and the water's been redirected, and I said it'd be really cool to be able to step back in time for a while, just to see what it looked like originally.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you think that there was a riverboat under River, you know, in time, it's, it's, it's just kinda amazing, you know, that, that that river could have even had a, a riverboat, so, yeah, so, so. I guess I don't have too much more, I mean, we're, we're gonna still, still strive to stay, you know, connected with the communities around and stuff and, and everything, and get our name out there, and, and, um, we're very thankful for your guys' help through the past years, and hope that you'll consider us again for this next year and stuff, so.
Sounds great.
Appreciate all you do.
Okay.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
This is just a side note, so we're, we're having our final, we're having our Christmas open house at our house, at our house. This is our, this, we're guaranteeing this is a la- very la. So anyway, so, cause our house is, our house is a hundred fifty years old this year, so, um, so we got it all decked out in our Santas and everything, and old lighting and stuff, so you're welcome. It's gonna be this Saturday and Sunday, ten to, ten to four on Saturday and one to four on Sunday, so you all might get to come out and stuff. And please make a point to make it over to the museum, take a look and see, cause it's, it's really nice.
Thank you, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this somebody watching too?
She say ten to four and one to four? Ten.
Ten.
Was it ten? What, what time did you say, ten to four on Saturday?
Do you guys know where I live?
Yeah, well, I do.
Yeah, I do.
Um, ten to four on Saturday and one to four on Sunday, yeah. A lot of people know that, that there's a Frankel farm, that's what a lot of people, know where they are, but, yeah. Okay, we'll see.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's first, first place there. Going out of town in the regular. Yep, right after.
If you haven't been there, it's worth going, your son would love it.
It's a neat house.
It is, it has more Christmas decorations in one house than I've ever seen in my life. It, it's really cool.
I might, might have to come up on Saturday. Kaylee's doing wedding photography up in Joyce this Saturday, so, it'll just be neat. Now I might have to come out.
Think we got. Law library's the only thing we got left, right?
He never responded to my emails, so.
Give him ten minutes, see if he shows up.
He said he was gonna come, so, yesterday in his email, so.
What time did she say here on Saturday? Ten to four on Saturday and one to four on Sunday. I actually enjoy these parts of the budget, having people come in.
Last year I was, I sat in on all of them, but I wasn't on board yet.
Oh, yeah, with the calendar year change.
Yep. See with the city.
I prefer to listen for those or not.
With the city, I, I, we were all trying to figure out, cause we have a city, new city council person in Laverne, and we had someone get off. Can you vote on things before the first of the year, do you know what time?
No.
What?
Not until you're sworn in.
But if, if you swear, so if you have the election in November, right? And then, we had a new city council person come on, cause someone got off, um, in Laverne, and at our last meeting.
So did they?
If he gets sworn in in December.
It depends on, so is, was he elected as to fill a vacancy?
No.
Um, cause it's, it depends on how they're elected, when they take office.
And isn't there certain criteria of when you can be sworn in?
Well, depending on what he's elected as, so.
As a city council person.
No, I mean, if it's to bill, fill a vacancy.
Oh, she, she got off, she just didn't run. Then her term.
Okay, then her won't, she won't start till January.
Well, the new guy won't start.
The new person.
Can't vote until January?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Because the other, the other one, it's all determined.
But if it's to fill a vacancy, then they will be able to.
That's what I thought, okay.
Did they vote?
I don't say anything.
Played the fifth?
I'll play the fifth, I miss that. No, I, I think that was the confusion, was because last year, someone did get off. And they filled a vacancy, and, yeah.
Yeah.
You just want me to fill this?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
When everyone comes back, we'll be able to start it.
Morning, hey, morning, how are you guys?
Yeah.
Morning.
And see those terms start at different times when it's to fill a vacancy.
Yeah.
So then they have the power to do that, so, yeah.
Good to know.
It's got another term being, gonna be showed up shortly here. It's a little back.
I didn't realize this was the grant program.
Didn't either.
It's a two-boxway.
No.
Yeah.
That's right on that corner, Tina, right there, isn't it?
No.
On the corner.
It's down first street there, or the, like you got my street, and then the first one going south into town. You're gonna go down to yours.
Okay. Being, uh, is it being Avenue or Hannah's Street?
Well, should be Hannah's Street.
Okay, that's what it's, so, okay, that's down there.
Did I sign in there, are we okay?
Mr. Lauer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We won't, we won't throw you out immediately if you don't sign in.
But should I sign, is that what that's for?
It's for anybody that comes in.
If, if you can, it's great, but we won't, we won't hang you out to dry too bad.
Any gems on my name, will it?
Oh, okay, yeah, that is, oh, little pool there and stuff.
See they, yeah, they don't, or them.
Yeah, I kinda, can't remember seeing.
You big uncle.
Something going on.
And then there's another house, just the block north of that. That was trash, and then the neighbor bought it, and now it's put all new siding, remodeled it and added on a kitchen, all that kinda stuff, so. Yeah, so there's a couple that look a lot nicer than, than they did before, for sure. This one, the porch fell off.
Yeah, oh, that's weird, I could see everybody.
So we're ready whenever you guys are ready.
We're waiting for Josh comes back.
Understood.
Only that seventeen volumes plus an index. And that was me just, uh, taking inventory of current.
Yeah.
Prices individually, I suppose. I don't know if they're giving a, a bulk order discount.
Do you have a subscription at your, at your, your US law or like this?
Couple of volumes in there up there.
Actually, this is, this is all. Is it third floor?
Yeah, yeah.
Forty-one floor.
The judge's office. Yeah, you kind of need to meet in two.
Yeah.
On chambers.
There he is.
Well, feel free to start whenever you're ready here.
All right, well, good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Stephen Courtney, I work out of Pharmacist Mutual in, in the legal department.
Jim Lauer, across the street from, uh, Bob Dodson and Sarah Gunter.
So we're here to present the, uh, the Cassuth County Law Library. And so I guess I'll start out on the treasure of the Cassuth County Bar Association, the Cassuth County Law Library. Uh, we've gone through quite a transition with the law library. LexisNexis and/or Westlaw, which is the online subscri- legal subscription, uh, model that, uh, the law library has subscribed to. Um, back in the day, the law library provided that subscription, and all the, the law firms were able to sign in on that account and, and get access. Um, Westlaw and Lexis decided that, uh, changed their subscription models to where that was no longer allowed. Um, so each law firm had to get their own subscription, uh, to the, to the various, uh, online legal resources. Um, and so the law library did keep, um, the subscription, um, Um, and so the law library did keep, um, the subscription, um, for the law library. It was last year, we kinda did an audit to see, is anyone using that online subscription? Um, and deter- and we determined that, uh, that it wasn't being used. And so we canceled that subscription. Still have the check from last year, uh, because we, we didn't really know with the transition what we were gonna do, uh, with the law library. Jim, we kinda speak to a little bit of, he went into law library, looked at the book subscriptions that we currently have in there. Um, and some of them are very, are very dated, um, so we have used some of the money in the law library to, to update, um, some book volumes. And, uh, there's a, a particular volume, um, in there that, that we do hope to update. Um, and I can let Jim speak on that, uh, if we're granted additional, uh, money from, from you guys.
Yeah, broadly speaking, probably the most useful practice tool would be the Iowa Practice Series. And it's a seventeen volume set that covers a variety of topics. As attorneys who are doing any sort of practice, not just in courtroom work, but even business work for, for contracts, it's, it's very useful. Um, it's a physical paper set, and one of the benefits of it is it's an accessible format. Um, you know, even for a non-attorney, there's, um, you know, a couple of volumes of forms that would be both civil litigation, criminal litigation, and, and general contract. Um, material. So anyway, as, as attorneys occasionally, uh, you know, one of the offices here in town would check out a volume. Uh, you know, use it and return it, you know, Dale Briggs, uh, does a good job of, um, you know, just monitoring from time to time, you know, what, what books are out, um, as the law librarian, therefore us. Uh, but now the practice series, one of its benefits too is it is accessible, so far as those members of the public who do, um, occasionally use the law library. It presents information in a way that lets it be, you know, adapted to practical legal effect without going down a, a rabbit trail of copy and paste from the internet. Um, you know, with the West, Westlaw Lexis subscription and the availability of this general information on the internet. A lot of people, if they're, say, pro se litigants, you know, do, do copy and paste, uh, work at home to bear in effect. Um, the usefulness of the forms in the Iowa Practice Series, it would be a, a better tool if, if they would avail themselves of it. Uh, certainly as material in the law library, that's probably the most single useful type of service that can be provided to attorneys and, and any non-represented members of the public, both before the court or for, you know, general legal principles. Cost of that this year, um, cumulatively among the seventeen volumes would be fourteen thousand plus. Uh, we've updated those periodically in the past, the last time we did an update was twenty sixteen. For almost all volumes, I think there's one volume in there that was dated to two thousand twelve, and if I'm recalling, in twenty sixteen, we decided, well, you know, we don't need to update that volume because it was on probate law, and there were some changes because of the newer that'd be coming anyway. As far as the budget question, in my mind, gotten with Stephen before, it's, you know, how should we be in a cycle of keeping those practice volumes current? You know, seems the last time we updated in twenty sixteen, it was all across the board. You know, we wouldn't necessarily need to do it across the board in the near future or anytime. Um, you know, it depends on, you know, for some extent, you know, how areas of law, of the law are changing. Um, but generally, there's enough changes where each volume of the Iowa Practice Series, a new edition comes out every one year for some of them. You know, every, every two years, you know, maybe for others. As a practical matter, if you have a year old, five-year-old volume, it's not a big problem, but once you start pushing towards, you know, a, a decade old, then you start thinking, okay. If you're relying on it, you know, the user be warned, you know, information in there won't necessarily, um, be current. So, um, that varies depending on the type of law, but I think as a general principle, we'd be looking to in the next year or to start to, uh, replace at least, you know, some of those volumes, if not all, over the next, you know, three, four years. Uh, so I guess as far as budget, on an annual basis, you know, Stephen, I don't know if you, as the treasurer of this, you would, you would weigh in thinking, okay, if you just kinda do an average.
Yeah, so I can, I can speak on that, the, uh, currently in the Cassuth County Law Library checking account, we have just over seven thousand, uh, in there. I still do have last year's check for, uh, or this year's check for six thousand that, that I have in cash as we're kinda going in that transition period of what we were gonna do. Um, if we were to cash this year's check, uh, it'd be just to, to thirteen thousand to where we could likely, um, update a lot of the Iowa practice material that, that Jim was, was speaking on, and then at that point is, you know, if we're gonna look to update volumes, uh, in books once every six years, eight years, ten years, you know, we, you know, right now, we're currently getting six thousand a year, um, in, in, uh, in, in funds, so, um, we, we likely can cut that back potentially, um, and, and it's more of, we won't be, in the past, we've always used the six thousand dollars a year we got in with the online subscription. Now it's looking at, we, we bank in, in a, in an account and, and use it several years down the road to update a whole volume of, or a series of volumes of, of books. So again, that, that's where the, the budgeting is gonna be different, I guess, for us moving forward in that we're not gonna be using the six thousand dollars a year it's given to us, where it's gonna be in a bank account and saved until, um, until we have enough money to update a whole volume of, of books for the law library, so. That's, that's kinda where our discussion is today, of what is that budget number, is it six thousand, still is it less than that? And then we can work from there on, on what we want to update in the law library. Questions?
Well, I guess as far as the check you have there, since that was the previous fiscal year, we don't have anything in the budget for this current fiscal year. So we will have to make changes for that.
We'll have to do a budget amendment, which, which is possible. Um, it's not that we can't do it, we can, um, because the money was allocated, it's just not in this fiscal year budget because it was allocated last year, so, um, and then I don't think you'll have a problem cashing the check, it'd be up to the bank, if they have a problem with it, we can issue a different one if that's what we need to do, but, um, we, we just have to add it to our budget amendment, so this spring we make sure that the money is.
Accountable. Apologies if I caused some issues with that, I, I, I would have cashed it if we didn't know what we were gonna do, uh, with, with the funds since we weren't up there, since we weren't gonna pay Lexis Nexis to continue that subscription.
I do think having a plan of continuously updating stuff and tailoring that specifically would be a good approach. Do you think, is there any specific dollar amount you have in mind as far as what, uh, lower average would be? Um, what we could sufficiently cover that with and s- and keep it stable instead of one year high, one year nothing?
My, uh, gut reaction on that would be fifteen hundred to two thousand a year. You know, fifteen hundred would get you, be two volumes updated a year, and then you can kinda cycle through from there.
Okay, yep, that's kinda what I had mental math in my head here, so.
And occasionally, you, there are other books that are good to wire outside of the Iowa Practice Series. Within the past year, we did get a updated volume on evidence, um, but that is more as, as needed as developing basis and not something that would be, okay, here's, here's a particularly useful series, would be more occasional material, that's, that's a player. Uh, so that, that would be, if I had to say by formal request, um, you know, two thousand could be factored in or considered by the board for, for future years. I think that on an annual basis would, uh, would allow us to, to meet the plan we've, uh, you know, discussed, and then if we find ourselves getting ahead, um, then we would strive to, like Stephen's prior, uh, uh, you know, thought with the check to be, uh, you know, responsible and, and say, you know, hey, we can back it off if, if we think we're just sitting on it instead of being able to, to move effectively.
Well, any other thoughts, questions from the board? Otherwise, no, appreciate it, um.
So as far as this year's request? Amount for this year's request?
Fifteen, fifteen hundred to two thousand.
Two thousand, do you have a request for, uh, for this fiscal year?
Well, you can always deposit the check and keep that for discussion for the next year, but yeah, appreciate being responsible and not blowing all the money just because, so that's always a good thing. All right, thanks for coming in.
All right, let me know if you have any problems.
Yeah, all right, we'll do, it, it should be okay.
Yeah, I think it'll be fine.
We should be, uh.
During board discussion, quick.
Oh, yep. Yep, we can do that here and then. Two, do you have anything?
Yeah, okay, so. Um, I got this letter from Nyaka, I think I forwarded it to you guys, or maybe I talked about it last week. Um, we'll need a replacement for Maureen Albert, um, and I'm not sure about Lyndon Connect, but we need, I need names, um, for these prior to the first meeting in January, so if you guys haven't already found somebody, if you could get those to me, so we can get that um, in writing prior to the January meeting. Um, and then, has anybody been able to come up with any names for the eminent domain commission?
I have one person that is interested.
Okay.
I just need to get in on some information on, you know, what he needs to know, do he need such?
Okay. And then the other one, Teresa Kellenberger, she no longer owns Teresa's Bridal, so I don't know if we need to replace her as well. Um, but I also have to have those names prior to the January, first meeting in January, because you guys have to approve this list on that day.
Yep, yep.
So if you can get those for me. Let's see, tonight at five o'clock is the compensation board meeting here, just a reminder that I'll be here at five o'clock. Next week. Um, we have a retirement rec- recognition for Ron Engelbart. Um, and so far, that's about all that I have, so I will not be here next Tuesday, Melissa will be filling in for me. So if you have anything, uh, I'll be here Monday, but I won't be here Tuesday, I have to pick my moment, I, I should be here Tuesday morning, so. And then I think that's on the.
Sounds good. Um, Jack, can you enter for discussion? Roger?
I should go to the weather.
Map. Day on Friday, I think it was.
Yeah.
And, uh, I left in the car, I'll give you some more information on it, and bring that back in. But it sounds like we are going to get a little better coverage for tornadoes and severe weather with process that's not gonna cross the county anyways.
Yep, I talked to Chris a little bit on that, so, I wasn't able to make it down to that, but I was aware of it. Anything else?
That's it.
I had wellness on Wednesday. Not much coming up other than at the auction back there and then looking ahead to February, the Super Bowl, uh, party, so. Um, sometime during that week, I don't think there's a date yet, but, uh, that's about all I have. And then coming up this week, there's the, uh, there's a meeting on Thursday.
Thursday morning.
At ten o'clock.
Yep.
And I'll let you, you're, I, I can't make it, so I'll let you talk, but that's all I have.
Yeah, so I got a, got a call yesterday from John Hemsweiler with movement veterans forward. They are in conversation with Don Teets about some sort of storage building and stuff, um, kinda on the south side of the fairgrounds. So they're gonna have, he's obviously gonna be there, fairgrounds is gonna be involved. He called me and Carter as well about being there, so I'll plan on going to that.
I can't make it, so if anyone else wants to go do that, I think the goal is just to have interested parties, you know, and what would happen with that.
Yep.
So.
So, don't have a lot of details, just information gathering stage, so to speak, right now, so. Yeah. Um, for mine, I think a lot of it's already been talked about for compensation board meeting, um, meeting with Phil and, um, Rick and Jacob for some EMS stuff here this afternoon. Trying to get some questions answered and whatever for our transition, but otherwise, I think that's all I got.
Um, I do have one more thing, so, um, budget workshops, the department heads have started scheduling their budget workshops for January, uh, third and fifth, so it'll be a Wednesday, I keep looking at that calendar and it confuses me, but it's Wednesday the third and Friday the, the fifth, so, um.
What time's the day, do we know yet?
Yeah, so I'll pull up the calendar and I can tell you what we're looking at here, so.
When you get sub-scheduled, do you wanna send us calendar invite for that too, or otherwise? I can put them in separate, but if I put it in and you send it out, then they're all double booked.
Well, it, it, so it's just one Excel page, so I'll just send you the date and the time, I can do that.
That's fine.
It's, it won't tell you what times for each department, but.
Yeah.
Are we looking at all day, both those days?
No, uh-uh, but I can't remember which day is which. Hold on. Everything here. I have too many active schedules going on at one time.
Well, if you wanna just figure that out.
No, it'll just take a second. It'll just take a second.
Okay.
Okay, so the third is from eight till eleven, or, or eight to noon, and the fifth is, no, sorry. Okay, I have to click on the right day, the third, Wednesday the third, is from eight until four. Friday the fifth is from eight until noon.
So far, those are the only two days that we've got for the budget.
Yep.
Okay.
Be back at one.
Sounds good. Anything else before we head out for lunch or then? All right, well, see y'all back here at one. Josh, what's the shortcut for locking your screen, is it?
Windows out.
That's right, I never use that. I always just close it, but, yeah, I mean, it's kinda, otherwise it's gonna affect my face and all that.
Yeah. Um, may wanna have Derek look at the owls. The one that's not facing correctly, it may have been blinking pretty much all morning.